Twenty-one public hearing to order and begin by acknowledging that the land on which. Thank you. Land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Kaitse, Quatlin, Masquee, and Semiamu First Nations. As I said, I'm Mayor Val Vannebroek and with me this evening I have Councillor Paul Albrecht, Councillor Terry James, Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Nathan Bahall, Councillor Rudy Stortaboom, and Councillor Rosemary Wallace. And staff with us this evening, we have Frances Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer, Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, Carl Johansson, our Director of Development Services, Roy Beto, our Deputy Director of Development Services, Rick Baumhoff, our Director of Engineering Parks and Environment, Hira Gill, our Manager of Engineering Services, Kim Hilton, our Director of Recreation, Culture, and Community Services, and Kelly Kenny, our Corporate Officer, and Paula Kuzak, our Deputy Corporate Officer. Alright, so this public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider Bylaw Number 3168, City of Langley Official Community Plan Bylaw 2005, Number 2600, Amendment Number 14, 2021. A bylaw to amend the official community plan in order to incorporate provisions for higher-density, mid-rise residential uses at the properties addressed 20179, 20189, and 20199, 538 Avenue, as proposed in the draft new OCP ahead of its targeted adoption in 2021. And Bylaw Number 3169, zoning bylaw 1996, Number 2100, Amendment Number 175, 2021. And that is a bylaw to rezone the properties located at 20179, 20189, and 20199, 53A Avenue to the CD74 Comprehensive Development Zone. And the third, Bylaw Number 3200, Official Community Plan Bylaw 2021. And that is a bylaw to adopt a new official community plan for the city. So I'd like to thank everyone for attending this public hearing, which is taking place by electronic means via Zoom. If we do encounter technical challenges during the meeting, please stand by, as we want to ensure everyone who wishes to speak is afforded the opportunity to do so. This public hearing is being live streamed on the city's YouTube channel and is also being recorded and will be posted on the city's website. If you are watching and wish to attend this electronic meeting, you can go to www.langleycity.ca to register and join the meeting. At this public hearing, those in attendance at this meeting believe that their interest in property is affected by one or more of the proposed bylaws will be allowed to make representations to council and shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the bylaws. We have three bylaws on the agenda tonight for the public hearing. We will follow the same process for each bylaw in turn. I know that we have a number of people who are in attendance to speak to the proposed new OCP bylaw, Number 3200. Please note that it is the third bylaw on the agenda. For each bylaw, I will ask the Deputy Director of Development Services to provide an overview of the purpose of the bylaw, and then if applicable, I will invite the applicant or consultant to speak to the proposed bylaw. Following these presentations, I will call for input from the public. You will use the raise hand function to indicate your wish to speak, which will automatically put you in the speaker queue. You will be invited to speak in the order in which hands are raised. When it is your turn to speak, staff will prompt you with a message asking you to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Please commence your comments to council by clearly stating your name and street address. Unit numbers are not required. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the bylaw. Your name, street address, and comments will form part of the record of this public hearing and may be published on our website. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following the presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with individualized citizens. Once you have completed your comments, staff will mute your microphone. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. I'm asking that you keep your comments to no more than five minutes to allow everyone who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so. Once you start speaking, I will start timing your presentation and I will advise you when there is one minute remaining for you to speak. Once everyone who wishes to speak has done so, I will call for speakers for a second time, at which those who wish to speak again should indicate so. And those who may not have spoken the first time, but now wish to speak should indicate so by using the raise hand function. I will then call for speakers for a third and final time. If there are no speakers, I will ask council members if they have any questions. Then we will go to the next bylaw on the agenda and repeat the process. Once public input has been received on all three bylaws, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, council cannot receive any further input on the bylaws. The public was also given the opportunity to provide written submissions for this public hearing. All submissions will be retained by the corporate officer and copies of the submissions will be available from her on request following the hearing and shall form part of the public record of these proceedings. Ms. Kenny, can you please advise how notification was provided for this public hearing and whether we have received any correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor, two newspaper advertisements for bylaws 3168 and 3169 were placed in the June 17th and 24th editions of the Langley Advance Times and notices were mailed out to owners within 100 meters of the subject properties. Three newspaper advertisements for bylaw 3200 were placed in the June 10th, 17th, and 24th editions of the Langley Advance Times. Notice of the public hearing was placed on the city's website, on the posting board on the first floor of City Hall, as well as outside the entrance to City Hall. We've received four pieces of correspondence in relation to bylaw Number 3168 and 3169, three of which are included in the agenda package, and one which was received after the agenda was published has been circulated to council via email. We've received 42 pieces of correspondence in relation to bylaw Number 3200, 21 of which were included in the agenda package and the rest, which were received after the agenda was published have been circulated to council via email.
Great, thank you. So getting on to business, the first bylaw on the agenda is bylaw Number 3168, City of Langley Official Community Plan Bylaw 2005, Number 2600, Amendment Number 14, 2021. And I believe Mr. Johansson, you are going to provide an overview of the purpose of the bylaw.
Yes, and thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council and attendees to this public hearing. Can you hear me okay? Thank you. This proposed application, which involves a five-story residential building with 56 dwelling units, requires an official community plan or OCP amendment along with a rezoning and development permit application as the proposed unit density is about 8% higher or about four units higher than the current OCP land use for this area. The proposed new OCP land use of mid-rise residential for this proposal accommodates this proposed density and is consistent with the new draft OCP, which envisions a density of 3.5 FAR and a maximum building height of 12 stories in this area. This application before you tonight, the rezoning application, is proposing an FAR-for area ratio of 1.69. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johansson. So I wish any, and now by anyone in attendance who wishes to speak to this bylaw to use the raise hand function to indicate their wish to speak. And I'll give it a few minutes. Sorry, we do have a time delay on the YouTube channel to here, so we're just giving it a little bit of extra time. So it seems like awkward silence. It's thanks to the internet. Okay, so I'll call for a second time for speakers on bylaw 3168.
Madam Mayor, there are no speakers so far. We have 27 in attendance. No one has raised their hand yet.
Okay, so I'll call for a third and final time for speakers on bylaw 3168.
No speakers.
Thank you. Seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw 3168? Seeing. So no one has any questions. Sorry, I'm just going on the. Okay, so there's no one else in attendance who wishes to speak to 3168?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll move on to the second bylaw on the agenda then. Bylaw Number 3169, zoning bylaw 1996, Number 2100, Amendment Number 175, 2021. And I believe Mr. Johansson, you have an overview for bylaw Number 3169 as well, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As noted previously, this application includes 56 dwelling units in a five-story apartment building. And the applicant is proposing a parking variance that's consistent with other recent applications in similar locations located about a 10-minute walk from the future Skytrain station at 203 Street and the Fraser Highway Transit Corridor. And the overall proposed parking amount is higher than what is being contemplated for the new updated zoning bylaw. The proposed reduced residential parking amount is also supported by a professional transportation engineer's report. The proposal was well received by the advisory design panel, and the applicant has incorporated the panel's site design and landscape recommendations into their drawings. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this brief overview, and I believe the applicant team is here tonight as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johansson. And I now invite the applicant to speak to the proposed bylaw. And I believe it's Elena Topov-Sarovik.
Close?
Okay, did you want to introduce your team, or would you like me to do it? Did you want to just take over?
Sure, I can, yeah. My name is Elena and I'm with Keystone Architecture. And here today is Eric Poxlightner as well, who is the AOR. And I have Tim Croker, who is our client with RKDI. And I believe Clark might be here as well. Kevinina's with Kevinina Associates Landscape Architecture. Um, would you like me to share my screen and present?
Sure, if you're ready to do that, please go ahead. Thank you.
Please let me know when you can see my screen.
Yep, we can see it.
Wonderful. So this is our 53A Central project. It is a 56-unit, five-story residential development in the city of Langley. Our OCP designation, as mentioned, is high-density residential, and we are asking for an OCP amendment to low-density residential, which will permit an additional four units. So our total floor units is 56, and 7% of those are adaptable. The variances we are applying for is the max allowable building height from four stories to proposed five stories, as mentioned, from 52 units to proposed 56 units. The required setback from the typical 7.5 to 6. The resident parking calculation factor from 1.2 for studio and one beds to 1, which is in line with the draft OCP. The visitor parking calculation factor from 0.2 to 0.15, which is also in line with the draft OCP. We are asking for two, a couple minor variances for visitor accessible stall length from 19 feet to 18 feet. We do just have one. The indoor amenities space from 2.3 square meters per dwelling unit to 2.18 square meters. And a resident small car percentage increased to 42%, which is just one extra stall. Public information meeting was held on Wednesday, March 17, and no members of the general public attended. As you can see, oh, I think I just skipped, my apologies. As you can see on this map, we do have a number of Keystone projects in the area, including one you may be already familiar with, which is the 53A East Project, which is just to the east of our site. This transit 10-meter radius map shows the alternative transportation modes, such as walking, cycling, and transit, are supported and encouraged in the city's master transportation plan. These strategic developments directions have led to recent infrastructure improvements within the vicinity of the development that support cycling and walking along 203rd Street and 53 Avenue. Several bus routes are currently operating along these streets and provide access to downtown Langley, which is only 900 meters or a walking distance of approximately 10 minutes from the development. That is the purple area that you see towards the northeast corner. According to TransLink, the future Langley Skytrain Station is expected to be constructed at 203rd Street and Fraser Highway and will further provide regional rapid transit access for residents at the proposed development. This is our site plan, and as you can see, we have a podium condition. Along 53A Avenue is the main entrance to the building. There is an accessible ramp on the right and visitor bike installs on the left. Along the lane on the west side is the visitor parking and a loading zone. And along the north lane is the parcade entry ramp. Approximately 300 meters north from our site is Linwood Park. And approximately 300 meters southwest is Nico Meckel Elementary. One of the ADP comments we received was to add a play structure and additional programming to the outdoor amenity area. Our development will provide a low-impact, low-height play space in what would be considered an unsupervised outdoor amenity area. The play space will be made up of natural elements embedded into the grassy area of the shared outdoor space. Additional programming in the form of communal garden plots have been added between the barbecue area and the parcade ramp, where they will receive plenty of morning sun. Seeding, a trellis, and additional planting have been added around the barbecue area as well, and the amenity patio has been increased in size. The building is positioned along the street, fitting in with the existing neighborhood context. Portions of the roof are popped up in order to reduce scale. According to the zoning bylaw, a minimum of 70 residence and 12 visitor stalls are required. The development is proposing to provide 62 residence spaces below grade, which is a revised rate of one space per unit for studio and one-bed units, and nine visitor spaces, which is a revised rate of 0.15 per dwelling unit access from the adjacent laneway to the west. Based on the total proposed 71 parking spaces, the average provided parking supply rate is 1.27 spaces per unit. A traffic study by Benny and Associates was conducted to show that the proposed 71 total parking spaces are sufficient for the proposed development, given the typical parking demands for Metro Vancouver developments and the alternative transportation modes available to residents at this location. Along the north side of the first floor, about 1,300 square feet of indoor amenities space have been provided. The space would lead out onto the exterior outdoor amenities space along the north. 20-story lockers have been provided in two common rooms on the first floor. The remaining spaces have been provided in speech and in the parcade. One of the comments that we received at ADP was just to make sure that our storage lockers are usable within the units. We have revised Unit C and separated the laundry stack washer dryer from the storage locker itself. Section-wise, you can see the building is sitting on a podium due to city of Langley soil conditions. We have designed it to allow natural daylight into the units through large windows and balcony projections. And the outdoor amenities space has been strategically positioned at the northwest corner to receive afternoon and evening sun, when the space will most commonly be used. The facade has been divided up with a plain mass both vertically and horizontally, creating a rhythm along the street and bringing the scale down to pedestrian level. As mentioned, portions of the roof are popped up as well in order to reduce scale. The entry is clearly defined as a break along the ground plane of the podium centered around 53A and designed with a wide stair and accessible ramp combination. The use of tiered landscape walls and the diversity of materials bring the entry down to a pedestrian scale. Breaking out only grounds the building, but also provides warmth, while a large overhead entrance canopy bestows protection and appears inviting along the street face. There's a better view of that entry on this page. Well, my apologies, I'm just going to skip back here for a moment. The exposed parcade portion along the street base has been surface-treated with a warm-colored brick, while the exposed parcade wall at the north side of the development will be clean and aesthetically pleasing with vertical and horizontal architectural reveals, and it will be painted using a light gray color just to make it clean and be able to provide easy maintenance for the future. This is our 53A East development on the east side of 53A Central. And as you can see, it's very similar in scale and texture as 53A Central. This is just a closer view of our material board. As mentioned, the ground plane does have brick to bring warmth into the pedestrian scale, while the above-grade levels are a mixture of lap and Warden-Batten fiber cement panel in gray, blue, and white hues. And that is our presentation. I'm not sure if Clark is here to speak to the landscape designer. I don't think he is, so that will be, that will be the end.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, so Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to bylaw 3169?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are 28 people in attendance. None at the moment have their hand raised to speak.
Okay, I'll call for a second time for speakers on bylaw 3169.
Doesn't appear so.
Okay, and I'll call for a third and final time for speakers on bylaw 3169.
Nope.
Okay, seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw 3169? Okay, I don't see anyone with any questions, so we are going to move on to the third bylaw on the agenda then. Okay, so on to bylaw Number 3200, Official Community Plan Bylaw 2021. Mr. Johansson, can you please provide an overview of the purpose of bylaw Number 3200, please?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. So good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the public in attendance tonight. Thanks for the opportunity to provide some introductory comments to bylaw Number 3200, which presents a new official community plan or OCP and its appendices, the Nico Meckel River District Neighborhood Plan and District Policies. Today's public hearing on bylaw 3200 is a culmination of an almost two-and-a-half-year process to develop these documents involving two years of public consultation, including public open houses, both in person and via Zoom due to the pandemic that arose midway through the process, workshops, design charrettes, online surveys, and check-ins with council. This process is detailed in full on the city's OCP and Nico Meckel Plan webpage. And the engagement summary attached to the staff report details feedback on these draft plans from the public and updates that have been made in response to this feedback. The creation of the new OCP and Nico Meckel Neighborhood Plan are key actions arising from the nexus of community vision, which council adopted in 2018. And these strategic documents chart out a vision for focusing new growth around Skytrain, fostering a broader range of housing, enhancing social equity and the economy, protecting the environment, and reinforcing the Nico Meckel River as the city's green heart. I'd also say that in the past few days, that climate change is no longer a somewhat abstract thing or event that's happening somewhere else. It's become very real for us in the midst of an unprecedented heat wave that simply defies conventional climate norms for this area. And this type of event could happen more often due to climate change. So when we consider the OCP, it's very important to note that implementation of the plan before us will also position the city very well to fight climate change by creating a more walkable city planned around transit and embracing many forms of housing that are aligned with transit, including not only high-density development around Skytrain, but also lower forms like townhomes along frequent bus corridors. Coupled with the numerous policies that are identified in the OCP oriented to fighting climate change, this will help to reduce our energy use and the emissions that cause climate change. I also want to say that when you're planning for a growing and evolving city, especially one that is situated in one of the fastest-growing and attractive regions in the world, and it's also about to enter its own Skytrain moment, you know that change is coming. But I want to acknowledge that while the prospect of change can sometimes seem concerning and daunting, it's also an opportunity to manage this change in a way that makes the city more livable for all. From the staff perspective, I can say we take the prospect of change very seriously. And our intent is that these proposed plans will enable and proactively prepare the community for continued growth as we anticipate the arrival of Skytrain, continued strong population and job growth, and also ensure that the city is on the front line of fighting climate change. The process and documents have been created by our very experienced hand of our consultant team, Modus, who is about to present for us, Patrick Ostrick, excellent support from our senior management and staff team here at the city, and of course, council's leadership and support in undertaking this significant project. It's also important to ensure that we thank the public and all those who have contributed to the creation of these draft plans. It is very much appreciated. With that, Madam Mayor, I can hand things off to Patrick to run us through a slide deck, providing an overview of the plans and the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having here this evening. It's a pleasure to be here back again to present the draft official community plan along with the Nico Meckel River District Neighborhood Plan at this public hearing. So I'm going to start off just by sharing my screen. And if everyone can see that, we can get started. So I'll give a bit of an overview of the project and how we got to where we are today. I'll also provide a bit of information on community engagement highlights over the course of not only the last phase of work that we've done, but across the entire process. And some key changes that we've implemented to respond to some of the community engagement results. Some major achievements, finally, that we feel can be implemented through this official community plan and then a Nico Meckel River District Neighborhood Plan. And finally, some next steps as to how we can move forward once the public hearing is over. So as for the project overview, really, the main objective- So as for the project overview, really, the main objective of this official community plan update and the Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan is to help implement the nexus of community vision that your community had adopted a few years ago. This means planning new growth around the Skytrain extension that's planned for Langley City. It means fostering a broader range of housing options for residents as we noticed that housing affordability becomes a bigger challenge across the region. It means enhancing equity and quality of life for residents of all generations and of all means. It means strengthening the economy, ensuring that we're at the leading edge of industrial changes and other economic drivers in the region. It means protecting the environment in relation specifically to the Nicomechle River District, but also in relation to your tree canopy and other environmental features throughout the city. And finally, it means reinforcing the Nicomechle River as the city's green heart. How we do that is through a set of policy chapters that emerged as key directions through the process. So there are five main policy chapters in the official community plan, the first being affordable living and diverse housing for all generations, the second being highly connected city aligned with rapid transit, then we have a chapter on a safe and inclusive community rich with cultural destinations. There's a chapter on a responsive economy that creates new jobs, and finally, a chapter on environmental solutions to fight climate change. Paired with these policy chapters, we also have included within the official community plan a set of urban design principles, four of them that we feel will really help create that walkable, people-friendly kind of environment within the city. The first being people-friendly buildings and streets, the second inclusive, memorable, and sustainable designs, the third is focused on great public places, and the fourth on being good neighbors. One of the foundational elements of the OCP is the land use plan. This land use plan changes the structure of growth in your community. It puts the highest densities, tallest buildings, and the greatest mix of uses around the 196th Street and 203th Streets, Skytrain Stations, and along the Fraser Highway Corridor. It puts townhomes along future frequent bus routes, aligning transportation with housing options. It puts some gentle infill housing forms like secondary accessory units, broadens the opportunity for those types of rental units or other types of aging-in-place housing options south of the Nicomechle. It allows for an innovation boulevard along Glover Road connecting the downtown core to the Quantlin Polytechnic University. There's also five new neighborhood commercial nodes for small-scale shops and businesses to enhance walkability in residential neighborhoods so that folks can take a quick walk five to 10 minutes from where they live and perhaps grab a carton of milk or shop for a little coffee or grab lunch with friends. Suburban residential areas are kept in place in certain areas that can host smaller, single-detached lots and also provide opportunities for some suites in those areas south of the Nicomechle as well. In terms of the process that we followed, it was a four-phase process for the OCP where we conducted some background research in the first phase, had a big community visioning and community engagement activity list in that second phase when we were exploring options and envisioning with the community. And phase three was all about developing policies and regulation and ensuring that what we heard from the community was being reflected back in the draft plans. And finally, we find ourselves in phase four, finalizing the plan and the bylaw and shepherding it through an OCP bylaw adoption process. The Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan followed a very similar process but compacted into three phases. The first phase being around exploring options where we launched with a big design charrette, exploring what the Nicomechle River District meant to residents and how we could implement some very interesting, very bold and transformative ideas for that corridor, creating really a community and transforming it into the jewel that it really is for residents in the area. The second phase is about developing the policy direction, drafting the plan, again, ensuring that we were reflecting community desires through that plan. And finally, in phase three, we're finalizing the plan and adopting it as part of the OCP bylaw. So bylaw 3200 contains three documents, the official community plan and its two appendices, appendix A, the Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan, and appendix B, the district policies that add a bit of a finer detail to some of the land uses and some of those areas, those key strategic locations where growth will be occurring or are anticipated to be occurring in the future of your community. We also want to just make sure that what we're doing today is updating and speaking to an official community plan, and that means we're looking at land use designations and not zoning. There's a distinction between the two. And so an official community plan establishes designations that underneath those designations, there are a set of zones that can be applied to those designations. And so what we're doing here today is not updating the zoning bylaw. We're not changing zoning rights. The adoption of this bylaw does not change the zoning of any property. And the way that we ensure that the community essentially achieves the vision of the OCP is through property owner-led rezoning processes. And so if a property owner would like to develop their property to something different than what their current zoning permits, then they would rezone their property in alignment with that new land use designation. And so this is really a piecemeal approach. It happens one by one as property owners are ready to either sell their property to another, to a developer, or would like to develop it themselves. So the property or change will not happen by the city expropriating folks or any of that kind of thing. That is not what is being proposed through this OCP update. So moving into community engagement highlights. As for the OCP, we saw a range of different activities, both online and offline. Carl had already discussed some of these activities, but the first being some community pop-ups in the summer of 2019. Over 312 interactions were held at those community pop-ups. We had a charrette for the OCP as well with 58 participants and 50 open house attendees at the end of that charrette. We had two online surveys for the official community plan with about 861 respondents in total over the course of those two surveys, four deep dive workshops to really explore topics with a range of community stakeholders. About 49 participants were attending those. And finally, we held one virtual open house for the OCP, a second one for the Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan with over 100 attendees. And so for the actual draft plan, which included the Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan, we had two virtual open houses that were facilitated and one online survey that incorporated both as well. So to give you a bit of stats on that last phase of engagement, the draft OCP had a virtual open house with approximately 115 participants. The draft Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan had a similar virtual open house with 64 participants, and approximately 332 surveys were taken with regards to the draft of the Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan and OCP. Some of the key takeaways from the survey were that all parts of the official community plan and Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan presented received majority support in the community. That means over 50% of those who participated in the survey felt that the OCP and the Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan were appropriate and reflected their values and their vision for the future. Support was strongest for environmental policies, specifically protecting the Nicomechle River ecosystem. That's something that was very important to community residents. Concern was most focused on land use policies. So there was a bit of hesitancy in terms of change in certain single detached neighborhoods. There's also a desire for greater attention to be placed on community safety, and that we heard quite clearly in some of these engagement activities. Some of the key takeaways from the last open houses that we held, that there was a bit of concern around phasing and timing of implementation, as I described a little bit earlier, is a property owner-led rezoning process is how the majority of this type of development would be occurring. There was concerns around the ability of the city to meet some of the growing infrastructure needs as population would be increasing and we would see higher density developments in certain parts of the city. There's some concerns about some future study areas that we were floating as part of the original draft of the official community plan, specifically around the potential for speculation. There were concerns about traffic and parking issues, and then also the difference between land use designations and zoning that I just explained a few moments ago. So we made some changes to the official community plan and Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan. We presented that at first reading several weeks ago. In terms of referrals, in between first reading and tonight, referrals were sent to the Quantlin First Nation, Metro Vancouver, Township of Langley, City of Surrey, Translink, the Agricultural Land Commission, several ministries at the provincial level and at the federal level, the school district, the Langley Regional Airport, Downtown Langley Business Association, and the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce. And we had also sent the draft of both plans to several of these organizations prior to the referral system to make sure that they were aware of the plans and could comment on them and provide feedback before we presented the final versions to council at first reading. Some of the key takeaways from agencies, and this isn't a full list, but some of the key takeaways here. The Quantlin First Nation had desired to see recognition of rights and title be highlighted within the documents. They were hoping to see the revival of the Hunkamanum language, opportunities for housing partnerships, and policies that would allow for referrals when applications impact environmentally sensitive areas. Metro Vancouver felt that the OCP was strong and effective in alignment with goals of the regional growth strategy, both the 2040 metro or Metro 2040, the existing regional growth strategy, and the future Metro 2050 regional growth strategy that they are currently looking at updating. City of Surrey and the Township of Langley, all, both of them saw opportunities to partner and collaborate on issues such as safety, on watershed planning specifically related to the Nicomechle River and its watershed, which stands quite a few local governments, and also areas surrounding Willbrook Skytrain Station. So thinking about ways to partner and ensure that our design thinking and our land uses are complementary in this area of where the Skytrain will come through. Translink felt that the alignment between the proposed plans and Translink goals was quite good and that they would like to see a little bit more density and heights in some transit-oriented land use designations next to the Skytrain Stations. Of course, that is a bit in conflict with some of the comments that we received from Nav Canada, given the Langley Airport, which limits certain heights and densities, or at least heights, in parts of the city. The Downtown Langley Business Association felt that the OCP and the Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plans were well thought-out documents that will serve downtown and Langley City residents well into the future. Some of the key changes and updates that we'd like to highlight here that we responded to in to reflect community desires and feedback over the course of the last phase. Specifically, we removed those special study areas that were causing concern in the community specifically around land speculation, and we reverted those areas back to suburban residential designation. We reduced the maximum density for ground-oriented residential development, so townhomes and plex-type housing, from 1.6 FAR to 1.2 FAR, and that's for both ground-oriented residential, that's happening north of the river, but also south of the river. I think there was perhaps a little bit of confusion around that, but there, yeah. So all of the ground-oriented residential land use designation has been dropped to that 1.2 FAR, which essentially would mean that, you know, the massing, the form of the townhouse, while still perhaps reaching three stories, would have to be brought down a little bit, and the shapes would then integrate and be more sensitive to some of the single detached homes, which can also go up to three stories next door or nearby. The suburban residential designation, we also looked at giving the ability for single detached homes to provide an attached secondary suite or a garden suite if your lot is over 557 square meters. So that would give a little bit more flexibility to property owners in that suburban land use designation to choose between either an attached basement suite, for instance, or a garden suite. Some of the concerns that we've heard were specifically around 20208 Street corridors and the townhouses and plex-type housing that may be occurring there in the future if this plan is adopted. And so some of the things that we have thought of and we've integrated into the plan to try and address these concerns are listed here. We feel that townhomes and plex housing are a gentle way to incorporate more affordable family housing options along the edges of single detached neighborhoods without breaking into the integrity of some of those single detached neighborhoods. And several townhouses and plex housing developments already exist south of the Nicomechle, next to the Nicomechle River Floodplain and in pockets near 200th Street. So these are forms that aren't new to some of these neighborhoods. This is a housing type, the house that has the potential to fill a significant gap in Langley City's housing stop, as identified in the Housing Needs Report that we presented to council, I believe, earlier this year. Results in safer pedestrian cyclist and vehicle movements by removing some of the driveways on arterial roads like 200 and 208 Streets and providing wider sidewalks in these areas. So really focusing on ensuring that if development occurs along these two main corridors, that it happens in a way that really encourages and emphasizes that pedestrian-friendly environment. We think that there's also the opportunity for some smaller lot sizes for some of these townhome developments to reflect smaller scale and incremental development. Townhomes are also supported on some of the major corridors while single lot development, like through duplexes and triplexes, is supported off those major corridors. So townhomes would not be supported on things on streets like cul-de-sacs. And so we've certainly tried to ensure that there's a bit of a gradient from the arterial where townhouses would be allowed and then slowly kind of drop down to duplex, triplex form as they integrate further into those single detached neighborhoods. Another concern that we've heard is about the new Garden Wild Pathway that is proposed in the Nicomechle River District Neighborhood Plan. So specifically, that sort of pink path south of the river that would connect Heineken Park to 200th Street there, that's signaled by the red arrow on the left-hand side of the map there. We want to stress that at this point, alignment on the map is conceptual, so that will require further environmental study, community engagement, and project costing to ensure that we get it right. So that is really a concept as of today, and further study is certainly needed to ensure that we have the right location for it and that it can respect the privacy of nearby residents and also address environmental concerns in that area. It's one of the few parts of the Nicomechle River Floodplain where a north-south connection and an east-west path is missing. So we felt it's quite important to have it there. And we've heard from community members, of course, that an accessible path here that would create an excellent sort of recreational loop and provide greater connectivity to Heineken Park would be really appreciated. As I mentioned earlier, there were also safety concerns and through our engagement. And so some of the items that we've tried to address in the official community plan to address safety is signaling the need to create a community safety strategy in collaboration with the Township of Langley and Langley RCMP. We also looked at design guidelines and policies that really focus on safety, overlook sightlines, and community ownership of public spaces so that they aren't just left to be a bit desolate and they aren't just left to be a bit desolate and 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 they become these very vibrant places where people can really feel a sense of ownership in them. And finally, locating a community and or transit policing station office adjacent to the two oh third sky Street Skytrain Station is also a policy that is important in relation to this concern. Specifically, given that it would be either the starting port or the terminus of the Skytrain system. Strengthening some of the environmental policies was also a focus to ensure that we were reflecting some of the some of the feedback that we received. So there's stronger language about partnering with the Quantlin First Nation and environmental stakeholders in restoration and conservation projects. There's also the signal signal to create an urban forest management plan to protect the existing tree canopy and perhaps even expand the tree canopy as growth occurs. Clarifying also that lighting in in the Nickamackle River District Neighborhood Plan should be used sparsely to not impact sensitive wildlife. We also updated the D P guidelines and district policies. So we strengthened some of the ground oriented building design guidelines specifically related to townhouse developments so that it would integrate and be sensitive to adjacent, single detached homes. We updated high rise buildings and design design guidelines there specifically to address pedestrian friendliness and human scale so that these tall buildings can still create a very walkable environment and feel comfortable to those who are living and working and playing in these neighborhoods. We incorporated quite a bit of feedback from the advisory design panel into the design guidelines. And according to legal review, this is also something that we would be looking to update over the next little while. We do need a bit of a more robust justification for the general environmental guidelines, which we plan on doing for the final consideration of the bylaw. So in terms of understanding servicing needs, our subconsultant urban systems have been completing a desktop review and analysis of some of these key growth areas and whether the servicing in current infrastructure could accommodate some of these growing developments. And so a high level analysis was performed specifically in areas like the two hundred and two oh eight street corridors, Fraser Industrial, one ninety sixth and two hundred and three Skytrain stations. So some upgrades are inevitably required for sanitary and water infrastructure. The scope and cost will be investigated with future master plan updates, but at this point we can certainly affirm that the O C P land use plan is feasible. The upgrade costs can be integrated into an updated D C C bylaw, so there's no red flags. We're quite pleased with with the results of this analysis. Having said all that, I'd like to go over a list of major achievements that we feel are mark of really significant milestone for the community. So the top ten, the first one being that robust engagement, including community workshops, open houses and online surveys resulted in overall public support for both these plans, which is a tremendous achievement. It's a plan that's founded on and builds upon the city defining an ambitious nexus of community vision. There's strong alignment between future growth and transit investments with a focus on the two planned Skytrain stations fundamentally changing the structure of growth in your community from one that was sort of centered around your downtown to one that's now starting to expand a little bit and centered around those two Skytrain stations. We have a land use capacity and housing policies that respond to and reflect future housing needs in the community. There's environmental protection and stewardship of Langley's greatest natural asset, the Nickamackle River. We're also formalizing Langley City's master plan in or Langley City's downtown master plan into the O C P and celebrating its unique role within the community. So now that's incorporated into a bylaw that has more teeth and it's easier to implement. There's also a bold vision for an innovation boulevard linking Skytrain to Quantlin Polytechnic University that we think will propel Langley City's economic future. In fact, there's already interest, I think, that has been coming to to City Hall about this particular corridor. Providing more housing options and supporting more complete walkable neighborhoods south of the Nickamackle River, something that was seen as very important right from the get go of this project, and we feel that we've accomplished this as well. There's an emphasis on high quality urban design, support safety and sensitive integration of new housing in established neighborhoods. And finally, the last of the ten, inclusive recreational and cultural amenities that will foster community connections and belonging in the community. So with that, I will just give a bit of a slide here on next steps. So today's the public hearing and again, I thank everyone for for joining us today and participating in this process. I think mayor and council for coming along this ride with us. It's been, you know, two and a half years of real hard work and I know staff have been just tremendous, have been working with us hand in hand and have been, you know, shepherding this process along with us in in such a in such a helpful way. And so I want to thank staff. I want to thank mayor and council for for achieving this milestone and arriving here today at the public hearing. Should the public hearing, well, after the public hearing, we have a few options, but essentially in July we would have a regular council meeting where we would consider public hearing feedback tonight as well as a meeting potential for a third reading of the O C P bylaw. And so with that, I will stop sharing my screen and turn it back.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation, Patrick. You guys have done a fantastic job, you and your team with our staff. So thank you very much for everything. It's been great working with you guys as well. So thank you, guys and gals, sorry. Okay, so I now invite anyone in attendance who wishes to speak to this bylaw to use the raise hand function to indicate your wish to speak. And I'll wait a few minutes for, you know, allowed to do that and for Ms. Kuzak to advise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have twenty eight in attendance still and they are queuing up to speak. We can start with Ms. Kwan. If you could please state your name and street address before providing your comments. Thank you. Ms. Kwan?
Unmute. There we go.
Perhaps we'll go back to Ms. Kwan. Oh, she's having some technical difficulties. So at the moment, we will move on to the next speaker. Rudy Eidenberg, please state your name and street address before you provide your comments.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
How wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for this time. Appreciate that presentation very much. And I just want to say before I make any comments that I really appreciate the visionary exciting and really comprehensive O C P that I see for Langley City. It's very exciting. I do have one concern that I wish to voice. It was presented in the presentation briefly, and this is with regard to the path that's proposed between two hundred going over to Heinel Park on the south side, or me on the south side of the Nickamackle. I just want to emphasize at the beginning that I don't oppose the path in principle. I think the idea of having the flood plain more accessible to a lot of people is laudable. We're privileged to enjoy it every day. It's nice that there's a plan in place to get others to be able to enjoy it as well. I know some of my neighbors have concerns with the environmental issues and so forth. But I think the principal issue that I would put forward is one of security and privacy. If you look at a map, you'll see that the proposed path would at least in four locations along the Nickamackle come very close to properties. Mine is a good example. If I go from my property line to the Nickamackle, it's no more than twenty meters. So obviously that path would pass very close to my property. That raises some issues for us. As you mentioned, it's dark at night. We want to keep it that way for the wildlife, but that does raise some issues about security for properties that suddenly become accessible. And of course, the other issue would be about a path and the impact it would have on the environment. The suggestion that I had was if a path is proposed, would it not be more sensible to move it to the north side of the river? It would give those of us that live here a natural barrier between our property and the public access. And at the same time, would eliminate those pinch points that I just referred to. They don't exist on the other side, the other bank of the river. It would also achieve a reduction, the loss of our privacy, pardon me. And it would provide easier access actually from the existing paths to a new path. Could swing off from the existing path and create the loop that you talked about. Now, I understand as you emphasized in the presentation, it's a concept. But the current concept clearly indicates that the objective is to make the path on the south side of the Nickamackle, and that's where the concern lies. So the request from myself and those that have given me their names to represent them would be that we consider an amendment to the plan which would either move the path away from the south, perhaps not at all, but certainly to the north side of the river otherwise. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Kuzak.
Yeah, so Ms. Kwan is having a technical difficulty. So if I may, I'm going to provide her comment to perhaps staff. Official Community Plan, page thirteen, please define gentle density, environmental solutions to fight climate change, keep old trees, greener housing.
Mr. Johansson, would you like to answer that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Perhaps Patrick and myself could could answer this in 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 portions or have a number of questions there. Of course, we're glad to provide provide answers. I think in short, the the term dense gentle densification is meant to it includes a range of multifamily housing options and detached suites and you know, accessory housing units, as we call them, but basically it involves lower forms of multifamily housing like townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. And it can also, as proposed in in the Urban Residential Land Use in the Plan, involve lots, single attached home lots that have an additional garden suite in the back as a way to add another unit gently onto the site, hence the name gentle gentle densification relative to large apartment buildings or towers that you typically see around Skytrain.
I can I can maybe speak a little bit to environmental solutions that fight climate change. And so that is a policy section in the document itself. So it it touches on a range of different policies that would that that are tended to reduce G H Gs within the community. Everything from electrification of of vehicles to, you know, drainage and 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 rainwater management strategies, green streets, walkability, those types of things that would that would help the municipality reduce the two main G H G contributors within the city, which are transportation related emissions as well as building related emissions. So things like green building materials, of course, are also included within the development permit guidelines. And in terms of keeping old trees, I believe that would be absolutely one of the main priorities of a urban forest strategy. An urban forest management strategy, which is intended to be completed once the O C P is is adopted. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Up next, Ms. Lavak.
Oh, sorry, before you go on.
I apologize.
Johansson, did you have something to add to that? I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just adding on to Patrick's point there about you know, what I mentioned in my opening comments about environmental solutions to fight climate change. We have a real opportunity here in in Langley City with the arrival of Skytrain. The amount of commuters and people that can move in rush hour is equivalent to an eight to ten lane freeway in terms of the capacity of people that can move. So you can imagine all those cars that are being removed from the roadways during peak periods and, you know, the resultant reduction in emissions. And it's not just Skytrain. It's it's adding those bus routes, those rapid bus, frequent bus routes along two hundred street and two oh eight. The ability to move people around without having to expend gasoline. And of course, we're also supporting the expansion of electric vehicle charging in residential buildings and also exploring that public publicly accessible stations. Just briefly to Ms. Kwan's question about greener buildings. We definitely have policies in the O C P that support reduced energy use and emissions from buildings, including implementing this, the B C Building Code step code to improve the building efficiency or efficiency of buildings over time. And using alternative energy sources and solar panels. We recently had a building that incorporated those into the rooftop there. So we definitely want to include and really encourage best practices when it comes to green buildings with new development in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Johansson, Ms. Kuzak, who is next?
Thank you, Ms. Lavak. Please go ahead by stating your name and your street number, please.
And you will have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Anna Lavak, five two eight zero two oh one street. The O C P is several hundred pages in length. And buried in the O C P on page one twenty three is a land usage map. Now, looking at that land usage map, it shows that over five hundred and fifty homes along the two hundred and two oh eight street corridors are slated for ground oriented development. That's including side streets and cul-de-sacs off of those streets. So when you look at the map, at first it doesn't look like that many homes. But I actually pulled out a detailed map of Langley with the homes visible and marked them all off over five hundred and fifty homes along those corridors. The owners of those five hundred and fifty homes have not been appropriately consulted about the O C P. My husband, myself, some friends dropped off informational flyers to these five hundred and fifty homes to let them know about the proposed O C P and the fact that their home was in an area slated for potential ground oriented development. The vast majority of them were not aware of it. Those who lived on two hundred or two oh eight were somewhat more aware. But those in the adjoining side streets and cul-de-sacs which are included were definitely not aware that their homes were included in this area. Nor were those on the small part of two oh three between fiftieth and the Nickamackle River that is included in that ground oriented development area. As we as we talk to people in these cul-de-sacs, many of them realize the need, as I do, for increased density in Langley, south of the Nickmickle, along the transit corridors. But it seems to me that City of Langley should have dropped off information to these five hundred and fifty homes to let them know. Now, even though these homeowners are not aware, somehow speculators and developers seem to be aware because they have been buying up these homes at a record pace in these areas along the transit corridors and in the nearby cul-de-sacs and side streets. So the draft O C P has already done substantial damage to these neighborhoods by people buying up these homes as speculators. And as my husband and I walked through some of these areas, it was readily apparent which ones were already rental homes. They're the homes that are not well kept up, the homes that have the peeling paint, the homes that stand out from their well kept neighbors because they don't show the pride of ownership. Now, the problem with ground oriented development, as it's worded in the O C P, really lies in the issue of multi lot development. Multi lot development for townhouse development. Building townhouses on very large lots in undeveloped areas makes perfect sense. For example, about thirty five years ago, in Langley, south of the Nickamackle, there were several large townhouse developments built on unoccupied properties, and there was no problem with that. Right now, there's lots of townhouse development going on in South Surrey, in Langley Township, on great big properties where there's lots of room for townhouses. No problem with that. But where the problem lies is where areas are designated for townhouse development and there are already existing properties, existing houses on those lots. If multi lot development occurs, it means that a developer or speculator starts buying up those lots, putting renters in them, letting them become rundown for the next ten to twenty years because they spend the minimum possible as they try to maximize profits. And nothing gets built for ten to twenty years until the townhouse development goes in. So in ten to twenty years, it looks great with a new development. But in the meantime, there's a lot of pain for the neighborhood in that transition. If we promote single lot development instead, in other words, no multi lot development. If we promote single lot development instead, in other words, no multi-lot development, no townhouses, only single lot development south of the Nicomacheo, we will achieve the goals of the OCP much more quickly. With single lot development, we have a rental suite, a duplex, a triplex put on a single lot at a time. One home is torn down. Thank you. One home is torn down and a new building is put up, a duplex, triplex, or a townhouse. It's much more efficient. The increased population density begins almost immediately. We don't have to wait to 10 to 20 years for the townhouse development. So thank you, I'll stop my comments there.
Thank you very much for those comments, Ms. Lavak. Mr. Johansson, did you want to respond, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your comments. And I just want to note that the ground oriented designation like we outlined in the presentation and then Patrick can chime in on these points is that one of the first principles was to look at our rapid and frequent transit corridors along 200th and 208th Street and noting that the single family properties that front onto these streets have direct driveway access. And, you know, we looked at opportunities to see, okay, if we're looking at gentle densification south of the Nicomacheo, looking at townhouse, small scale incremental, half acre to an acre sized townhouse applications along these streets would remove those driveways, it would enable for those missing middle options, more affordable housing options and really upgrade that street frontage along 200th Street, for example, where you have pretty narrow sidewalks. You're able to put in street trees, a wide sidewalk, and also enable access to those townhouses through lanes in the back. And the idea is also to have those townhouses fronting onto 200th Street and 208th in certain areas across from other future townhouses. And given that the you know, you made a good point about in other areas that townhouse projects are larger. But in this case, it's actually the small size that we're looking at with smaller minimum lot sizes in our zoning bylaw to enable smaller projects that actually we think will be developed faster. Because we have a relatively fast development process here. And when applications come in, they usually come through and move along within six to eight months. And before an application needs to be before that bylaw could be adopted, those homes have to be demolished and the site has to be clean before development occurs. So I think we just need to, you know, go back to, you know, our first principles in terms of while we were looking at, you know, ground oriented development, it was really to get those missing middle options, you know, townhouses along these arterials and have those accessible to transit and able to improve those streetscapes. And, you know, reduce the amount of driveways coming on to these arterials. Now, as a part of the OCP and the theme of gentle densification, we also want to provide some options and variety, like Patrick said, for homeowners that, you know, may be interested in, like you said, single lot development, duplexes, triplexes. That is definitely supported in the ground oriented land use designation. And it's highlighted in the OCP district policies and in the Nicomacheo Plan. And our hope is that that's going to provide a variety of opportunities for multifamily development that, you know, sort of grades down from a townhouse edge along these arterials to something a little bit more gentle in some of the areas closer to the Nicomacheo and further out from 200th and 208th Street. And lastly, I just, I just want to note that you know, in terms of their consultation, we've been very deliberate in terms of getting these land use concepts out early to the public. Our first land use concept would show ground oriented development along 200th Street and 208th Street was first released and posted on our city website in December of 2019. And we also had a follow-up land use concept in June of 2020 with a survey and a key directions report that came out of that. So we've, and we've also been conversing with landowners in the area and we feel we've done quite a bit of consultation. We know that sometimes people don't get the word. They don't find out about things until later in the game, but we've been at this for over two years and I think that you know, the real estate market has been really hot and I would dare to say that a lot of those purchases are of single family homes, keep those in single family homes. And like Patrick said, at the end of the day, the property owner has the power in terms of choosing when to sell, when to rezone, and when to redevelop. I just, I don't feel that it's going to be having a series of houses as rental properties for 10 to 20 years. I think the demand is too great for these missing middle options and that those properties will probably redevelop pretty quickly, once those property owners just decide to move forward. So maybe I'll pause there and if Patrick, you have any further comments on that?
I think the only thing that I would add is just that there are the district policies that speak directly to the 200th Street corridor and 208th Street corridor that speak about, you know, where some of these ground oriented uses, specifically where duplex, triplex, and plex type housing may be supported, you know, on properties that are joining cul-de-sacs, for instance, and where townhouses or row houses may be supported specifically along some of these arterials and and where there isn't necessarily a cul-de-sac. So that's where that additional detail is added, is in those district policies. So it's, yeah, the land use plan on its own is not, it's not the be all end all of the plan, of course. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Kuzak, who's the next speaker?
Um, Madam Mayor, I think Mr. Johansson has another comment.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to also reiterate that from the perspective of concerns about speculation and rental properties and deterioration of properties and sites and buildings and that sort of thing, yeah, we definitely take that very seriously. We don't, we don't, we don't want that to happen. And that's why we're looking at a smaller incremental approach and really looking at, you know, being strategic in terms of identifying those areas. And, you know, I think it's it's also fair to say that not all renters can be painted by the same brush or people that have properties that rent to tenants. I was a renter myself for many years and you know, I did try and be a good citizen, so we're hoping that there's going to be a lot of people out there that do that and good property owners as well. But I think the other part of it too is that we have a community standards bylaw and from a staff perspective, we work with property owners to make sure that they're maintaining their properties. We don't tolerate properties that fall into disrepair and have poor yard maintenance. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Mr. Smith. Please start by stating your name and street address.
My name is Terry Smith. There we go. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, Madam Mayor, councillor and participants. As I said, my name is Terry Smith. I live on the Nicomacheo River and have for the last 40 years. I also own a property downtown Langley and have been very involved in the past in the development of Langley over the years. And I would like to talk about the development of downtown at some time in the future, but today I would like to address primarily the Nicomacheo footpath. It is indeed the jewel of the City of Langley. I am very much in favor of making it accessible to the residents of Langley and connecting it to Hainault Park and Brighton Lagoon. I would like to support Mr. Benenberg's comments. I believe a path on the north side of the river would accomplish all of the city's objectives and provide protection for the wildlife along the south side. And I went on Google and looked at, there are a number of ponds. And I remember walking through this area with some of the members of your staff and pointing out a heron rookery and an eagle's nest, which, you know, there is a lot of wildlife primarily on the south side of the river. But this would also protect this wildlife if we did it on the north side of the river and also provide security for the residents living on the south side of the river. A south side path presents some problems in riparian setbacks. And if you look at the Google map, there are several locations where lots or land properties almost border the Nicomacheo River. And I know riparian setbacks are, used to be 15 meters, I think they've been increased to 30 meters. And I wonder if indeed you could put a path along the south side of the river. My point is that we can accomplish everything that we want to do and certainly make it accessible. If we put the path along the north side of the river, you could come out directly behind my house. And there is a a, the City of Surrey has provided a very nice path and access to Hainault Park and also to Brighton Lagoon. There's a bridge there that is very nice. And if we came out on the north side of the river or the south side, north side of the bridge or the south side of the bridge, it would make no difference. And so it would be just as close to come out on the north side of the river to access Hainault Park and Brighton Lagoon. And again, that's basically all I want to say. I just think that the floodplain is indeed the jewel of the City of Langley. We support making it accessible to the people of Langley. Although we have some concerns about security and also wildlife. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments, Mr. Smith. Patrick or Mr. Johansson, sorry, did you have any other comments or? If not, it's okay. It's been answered before, so. Go ahead, Mr. Johansson.
I think Patrick and I were waiting to see.
I was trying to be nice about that.
Whoever speaks loses, right? Just kidding. What I can say is that, thank you, Mr. Smith, for your comments and and what, you know, what we've been saying about the Nicomacheo River District Neighborhood Plan is that, you know, it's it's a land use plan, but it's also a public realm enhancement plan and it has a series of conceptual trail improvements that could occur over time. The timeframe of the plan, which is, you know, 30 years out, you know, including the all seasons path on the north side of the Nicomacheo between 200th Street and 203, that's a major potential future project. And I think in this case, the primary intent of this is a conceptual connection between 200th Street and 196th and Hainault Park. And any, any type of trail alignment will have to be proved out through environmental review, engineering feasibility, much more public consultation if it moves to the project stage. Council would have to approve the scope and the funding for that. So there's a number of steps and likely time that would have to be undertaken you know, if this conceptual trail remains in the plan when council adopts it. And I think it's important to say that for each of these projects that are identified in the Nicomacheo Plan, like the path, the lookout, this conceptual trail connection, you know, staff can outline sort of the step-by-step process and how this how these projects would be implemented over time. And council will likely want to see from staff a priority list of, okay, we have a number of projects here. And, you know, projects that can be funded through community amenity contributions and that sort of thing. So which one is the most important one to proceed with now? And it's possible that this trail connection may be lower down the priority list. So I hope that provides some context to that and Patrick might have some further comments.
I think in in the development of this particular concept for the trail, we looked at the existing trail system and there is the Baldi Creek Trail that forms a path on the north side of the river at that point within that part or that section of the river corridor. So I think it was, it was seen as that path already exists on the north side, there's an opportunity to add one in a place where it doesn't exist and connect 200th Street to Hainault Park there, create a really great loop for folks to utilize and, you know, have that recreation amenity close to home. So certainly, as Carl mentioned, the actual location placement and pathway that this that this amenity would take is to be determined based on environmental review, making sure that we're not disturbing things like rookeries. And also with perhaps some design elements to make sure that security and privacy are respected. So that could be through landscaping, through, you know, all sorts of different types of strategies to ensure that security and privacy are, you know, are prioritized in this area. So those concerns are really well received and it's something that I'm sure staff will be looking at as we move forward. We will too. Thank you.
Great, thanks, gentlemen. Ms. Kuzak, who's next, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Hannah Walt, please begin your comments by stating your name and street.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. My name is Sandy Hannah Walt. I live at 5229 197A Street. I wanted to add what everyone else has added about the appreciation for all the work that Carl has done and the city and putting together such a comprehensive plan. I really appreciate the the idea of having long-term idea set down for this. I would like one thing, which is a small technicality. And that's in the engagement summary where you've got the changes. It says the change for FAR, or F A R, for ground oriented housing from 1.6 to 1.2 on page 34. It says it's for south of the Nicomacheo only. And because we have ground oriented north of the Nicomacheo, I'd like to ask that that be amended there. Carl did tell me that in the OCP, it says all ground oriented must be 1.2. But I don't want to have any issue in the future with developers trying to say that it was in that engagement thing that we could do 1.6. So I was asking whether we could amend that. I wanted to make one comment about people commenting about the pathway to the south. And we border onto the Brighton Lagoon and we don't have any safety issues. The city has, we have some nice blackberry hedges and also some native shrub hedges that provide a bit of a barrier. And the city has done very well with that. So I think what happens is probably a study has to be done to see how many landowners have built into the floodplain. And possibly the pathway there will actually give more protection to the environment and to the floodplain if we don't have homeowners encroaching onto that floodplain with their properties. But my main issue is that it's been very safe being here and that we don't have any issues, even though the pathway is right by the back of our properties. So I thought that was an important point. I wanted to make a comment about ground oriented use. There's some properties near our home that's basically near 55 and 198 where a whole section of the townhouses have come in. I'm guessing there's at least 150 in there. I tried to drive through there before I wrote my letter to council today. And you can't drive through it because it's not all completed. I mean, there could be 200 in there, I don't know. There are three stories. I'd say it's 95% concrete. They're just one three-level box after another. They almost all look alike. They're just repeating over and over with no They almost all look alike. They're just repeating over and over with no variation. They're, they look quite nice now. They're new. But I'm thinking in long term, what are they going to be like in 20 or 30 years from now? What is that kind of land use going to do? So like, we much prefer, along 198th Street, there's been some apartment buildings that have come up from 56 down to 54 in that area. But they're all unique designs, like they're really done well. And each one is different. And there's green, some green space around them. They look, they look really good. So our major concern is that with more of this ground-oriented use with, if it's going to be these three-story boxes that are going to be built, is probably the most economical way to build something. We're concerned that you're going to have more of this, what it looks like. I would encourage council to go drive through that area. You'll be shocked. I just couldn't believe what that, what that housing looked like. It doesn't look like any of the nice two-level townhouse development that's happening throughout the township. There's nothing.
One minute left.
Okay. The other thing is parking. They built, there's all built with tandem garages. And so all the street along 198 and 53rd is getting filled up with cars at night because there is no parking with what's happening with that. So we're quite interested in, in getting a strategic look at areas and looking at what types of housing can be built in that, which we'll deal with later with zoning. But I just wanted to make that comment now about what that one particular area looks like. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Patrick.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for those comments. And really appreciate the feedback provided here. I, I'd like to also, I'd like to address a few, a few of the, of the notes that you, that you addressed there. And the first is in relation to the density and where we listed in the community engagement document that we reduced the F A R from 1.6 to 1.2. I believe in the table, what we wrote, and I'm just opening it up here, is the rationale mentions in the neighborhoods south of the Nickelmeckel. But the actual change references the entire ground-oriented land use designation. So on that page 34, it says the change, the ground-oriented residential density is dropped from 1.6 F A R to 1.2 F A R. And the rationale is that community input specifically from folks south of the Nickelmeckel River, this was, there is this desire for lower townhouse densities. So we changed the entire ground-oriented residential density to 1.2. But I think the rationale was specifically to address some of the concerns that we heard about that integration in residential density south of the Nickelmeckel. The community engagement summary is not a bylaw. It does not bound anyone to any kind of densities. So it's, it's really about what's written in the official community plan that stands. But I, I just wanted to make that distinction in what was written in the community engagement summary. And secondly, one of the things, in, in, in particular around those townhouse developments and some of the design guidelines that we've incorporated into this new official community plan that try to address specifically some of the concerns that you were mentioning there. So I think it's page 88 of the official community plan. It has specific guidelines for ground-oriented residential. It starts speaking a little bit to things like avoiding long rowhouse buildings or townhouse buildings that you shouldn't contain more than six units. For instance, individual units or small unit groupings should be differentiated from one another so that we don't end up with a monotonous repetition. Facades should face both facing streets if it's a corner unit. And so there's, there's a range of different guidelines that are meant to really address some of the concerns that you were mentioning there. Because absolutely right, sometimes in some of these larger townhouse developments, there can be a bit of a monotony to them. They can seem a little bit repetitive. So I think the guidelines that we've put together.
Mr. Johansson.
Yes, thank you for your comments, Sandy. And thanks, Patrick, for your, your response. I just wanted to add on to that, you know, with, with the new development coming online. And, you know, you take a look at what's coming and what's coming forward. And, you know, you look to, to refine those parts that may, may need a little bit of improvement. And, you know, looking at the consultation process through the past two years, we've also really wanted to pick up on some of the comments about the concerns of townhouse development. In fact, we, we heard a lot about how townhouse development, sort of the, the larger projects in other communities, you know, had that monotony. There was a, a lack of open space, that sort of thing. So we, we have, like Patrick said, added 13 new guidelines to guide ground-oriented development. That includes also on, on the PLEX side. And, and looking to really up our game in terms of design, design quality and the attractiveness of these, of these developments. And on the parking side, you know, with the new zoning bylaw coming up, we're going to be maintaining our, our parking rates for townhouses north and south of the Nickelmeckel to ensure that they're parked properly. And it's, it is a challenge with, with tandem parking and side-by-side parking. We're, we're trying to look at that as part of the zoning bylaw. With, with smaller projects, it's a little bit easier to accommodate. When you get into larger projects, it can become an issue. I know when I was in another municipality, there was a lot of concern about people not using their garages for their cars, but their stuff and end up parking on the street. Now, unfortunately, that's something that the city has little control over. But we are also exploring ways to increase the incentive for storage on site and that sort of thing. But thanks for your comments. And we just wanted to reiterate, we're, we're definitely being mindful on the townhouse designs and trying to bring those to, to another level. Thank you.
Ms. Kuzak, the next speaker, please.
Thank you. Ms. Tang, please state, start your comments by stating your name and street number, please.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Tang. I live at 20370 53rd Avenue. I, I'm a little bit late to the party. I understand we're in phase four. And I, I literally just found out about it like maybe a week ago. So I do have some questions that were perhaps addressed already. So my first question is, me living in the current area that I'm in, just like right behind Portage Park, kind of. It is, I understand, like with the bylaws and the rezoning, like we technically don't rezone, or you guys aren't asking us to rezone. It's like, kind of like a question. But with that being said, right now it's residential. And I see on the map that it's technically a corner commercial and slash low-rise residential. So with that being said, what, what happens to our townhouse division, I guess you could say? And then with that, I'm wondering, is there like maybe a start date for this area? And I guess is there a developer? That's essentially my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tang. Mr. Johansson, did you, or Patrick? Patrick, maybe first.
Sure. I don't mind going first this time. Yeah, thank you for, for the questions. I, so the, the area just behind Portage Park is slated for that low-rise residential designation and a small commercial corner or commercial node there, specifically to try and activate the Portage Park and, and create a vibrant space there where you might have shops and cafes. It's a long-term vision. So obviously, the property owners of the, of the, of the, the property in which you live would have to all, would, would have to agree to one day either sell the property to a developer or develop it themselves in these kinds of large properties where there is a significant amount of, of residents living in them already. We, I, I don't recall if this is a rental property or not. But there are also rental policies in the O C P that speak to protecting renters so that if the property owner is to develop this, that there are measures in place to help compensate and to help relocate and to give first right of refusal to some of these residents who exist there already. There is not really, there, there isn't a timeline on this. Again, it depends on the property owner and when they believe is the right moment to, to launch that type of, of, of process. But of course, that would be dependent on, on the property owner. So it, it is just a plan for the city to look at and, and until the property owner decides they'd like to rezone the property or launch some form of development process, we, we don't have any clue as to whether, when that might occur. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Kuzak, the next speaker, please.
Yes, Mr. Melnick, please start your comments by stating your full name and street. Mr. Melnick, would you like to start your comments?
Hello. Sorry, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm on 1981053A Avenue. And what I want to talk to in particular was the Appendix A on page 30 of the Nickelmeckel Plan. You have that 6.11 pedestrian and vehicle access that's going to be put in between 53A Avenue and 54th Avenue. Now, I've heard said quite often in this meeting that there's been extensive consultation on this plan. And I've followed it. I've been a part of it. This is the first time that I've actually heard of this. And I'm concerned not only of the extra traffic into our cul-de-sac, but would we even be a cul-de-sac anymore? Would that open us up to building townhouses in here? Like, I'm kind of confused by what I saw, and I'd like some clarification on that. There is, I'd like to talk about one other thing as well, is the speculation that's been going on from this. We've actually witnessed in our neighborhood as this piecemeal approach to development takes hold. And you have developers come in, and in particular, two properties right next to us with two cul-de-sacs. They're on the third owner now. And the, the first one was a, a real estate agent. The second one was a developer, and now we have a third one that's another developer. And in that time, those houses went from very nice duplexes to having people lighting bonfires in the yards and, and really unscrupulous people climbing over your fences and going through your stuff at night. You know, it didn't take very long. And those duplexes are now torn down. There's an empty field there. And we have to defend our quality of life as developers want to build multi-story townhouses right next to us. I mean, it, it, it just seems that this wasn't talked about in the plan. I mean, this, this, I've never heard of this before. And I would like to know how it gets in here at this late in the stage. I mean, our daughter used to live in those duplexes. And a lot of her neighbors that she had moved out were replaced with people who didn't have jobs, who she didn't think paid rent. This is the kind of thing that's been changing in our, in our neighborhood. We've lived here for over 30 years. Yeah, I mean, actually, they, they didn't accept rent for a long period of time from some of these people. So, you know, while I appreciate what Carl says, that you, you pay attention. You don't let properties go into dereliction, but that's wrong. Many of our neighbors around here have made repeated calls, not just to the city, but to the police, to the fire department, completely unresolved. Right down to the end, when we're in a public meeting with a new developer saying that he's going to save us from these properties that have been run into the ground. And we should applaud this 13-unit townhouse complex that's going to be built along our properties. Are you aware this is how things actually operate on the street, block by block?
Thanks for that.
That's it. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Jason. Appreciate your comments. I'm not sure, Carl, did you want to answer that or, yeah? Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, and thanks, Jason, for your comments. And I, I just wanted to note that in, in that, in terms of land use in that area, in your neighborhood, the, the current O C P, Official Community Plan, that's been in effect for, for a while now, over, over a decade, does permit townhouse development in that area. It's just that the underlying zoning layer is single-tatch homes and, and in some cases duplexes. So I, I just wanted to clarify that the current O C P does propose, it does permit a townhouse development in that area, albeit at a, at a lower, slightly lower density than what we're seeing to the north and at a two-story, two-story level. I think on, you know, taking a step back and, and looking at the O C P itself and saying that, you know, in the current O C P, that land use has been in place for, for over a decade. The new O C P is also a long-term vision. And, you know, it stretches 30 years out. And what it does is, it just presents a game plan for future redevelopment for areas that are, that are going through redevelopment. And it, it actually helps to fight against a piecemeal approach and provides a little bit more certainty to property owners in the area, what could happen in their neighborhood. So that street connection, for example, would only occur if those properties were to redevelop over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. And, and the point of that is to enable for better vehicle and pedestrian circulation, access by fire trucks, and also to take the accesses points for underground parking off the streets and, and onto laneways. So that, that's the idea there is that if, if you put something like that in the plan early, it, it's something that's there to, to guide things and it doesn't become a surprise for landowners down the road. And, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry that you had to go through that issue with the tenants on the corner there. We were well aware of that. We worked very hard with the property owner to resolve that tenant issue. And it was resolved through the provincial government resolution process. But I understand it, it did take a little bit of, of time. But again, we wanted to make sure that that situation got resolved and those buildings were taken down as soon as possible. So thanks again for your comments.
Great. Ms. Kuzak, next speaker, please.
Thank you. Ms. Badgley, please commence your, your comments with your name and street number, please.
Hi, as you've heard, my name is Louise Badgley. I live on the corner of 208 and 47th Avenue. And I want to say first, thank you, council, mayor, and everyone there and all participants. But I also want to give a special shout out to Anne Lavick, who discussed briefly about how a lot of us weren't informed. And I know someone responded to that. Oh, you got my first name, Eunice, up there. So I go by my middle name, Louise. But anyhow, continue. I know that you, you said that you had done communications from December 2019 to June 2020. I think that was when we're pretty well in the midst of a pandemic. And seeing as that I had some experience with COVID-19, I don't believe I would have seen any of the communication. So I'm just happy that Anne did come around. And I started researching a bit of what's going on. I don't know what the, the long-range plan is, but I did want to say that there, since living here for the last 35, 40 years, I've seen some issues. I've seen some issues with the street out here, the noise and the vibrations. And I had to have my water pipes replaced twice. And in the midst of that, I had to contact City Hall to ask for some help from the engineering department because the construction people, the contractor who was repairing the two sink walls to start with, were dropping the asphalt on the street, and my whole house was shaking. So I had to get them out to come and help me with that. And I actually went out myself and kindly but firmly told them that's not how you break up asphalt. The second time was just last year, when you put in a turn lane here onto a wait. And they were again trying to break up asphalt by dropping it on the street, and pictures are falling off my walls. And this time, I documented my phone, instead of phoning City Hall, I emailed you and told you what was happening. I also took some video of what was going on and some still pictures. And he was very, very nice, and he actually drove out here and got the construction people to cease what they were doing, and then phoned me and told me that the land here is clay-based and not very good for building on or doing construction. And I just wanted to present that to you, that in the long range, I hope that you will have this area looked at more closely. Because even if I decide not to sell, but my neighbor decides to do major construction or the one across the street, there will be some issues. The second thing I wanted to address is behind me is a green belt. And we're talking about environment, and I appreciate that this whole plan has gentle beautification and a very high regard for our environment and climate change. And in this green belt, we've seen all kinds of things like rabbits and weasels and owls and what. But there's also fifty or sixty, if not possibly older, trees in that green belt that are just a pleasure to have in between my stuff and the neighbor below me, and it stretches down for a ways. And I'm certainly hoping that in your plan that this has been looked at because also with that green belt and those beautiful trees is a stream that feeds into the Niccolmacko River. So I am hoping that somebody does look very closely at what we have going on here. Next point I want to bring up is, like, I wish I had solutions for you about this clay-based soil here, I don't. I don't have solutions about these trees and this green belt and this beautiful little stream that runs back of my neighbor's house down toward the Niccolmacko. But I wanted to put that also out there about the traffic issues that we have experienced on the two oh eight.
One minute.
Quarter, we have fought, did petitions and attended meetings, and now what we have here is a red flashing light. Well, the traffic is like a freeway out here. So it adds to my broken pipes. Anyway, that's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Sorry, where did you come, Patrick, go ahead. Sorry, it's like looking, everybody keeps changing, and then I got to find everybody again.
That's fine, thank you so much, and thank you for your comments. And it's, yeah, there's absolutely some really interesting environmental features in that part of the city. And I was just looking through the environmentally sensitive area map that refers to natural environment development permit areas. And I believe that patch that you're speaking to right around two oh eighth street near Grade Crescent and forty seventh is highlighted in our map, which would mean that should redevelopment occur in that area, that it would have to respect the environmentally, the natural environment development permit guidelines, which establish certain setbacks and certain types of environmental conditions for those types of developments. And so it is certainly being considered through this plan in that respect. I believe that's all I had to say on that, thank you.
Mr. Johansson, did you have anything to add to that?
I think Patrick covered it well, and, you know, each application that comes forward that's adjacent to has environmentally sensitive area on it require a qualified environmental professional to do a study to determine setbacks and no-go areas. And in fact, our OCP identifies areas where of high sensitivity where you can't do development. So maybe some of these in the ground-oriented land use and high-density land use that portions of which or the entire properties could have some difficulty redeveloping. So that's just the reality of these adjacent to environmental areas. So thanks for raising that point.
Great, thank you. All right, Ms. Kuzak.
Yes, next on the list, Ms. Schellenberg, please state your name and street number, please.
My name is Leslie Schellenberg, I live at five three one one, one ninety eighth Street, one ninety eight. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I have lived in Langley my entire life, and my husband and I bought our house here over twenty-five years ago. We've raised our daughter here, have seen many families start and raise their families here, and built tremendous friendships with our neighbors. There are many aspects of this official community plan that are incredible, and I look forward to seeing some of them come to fruition. But there are also other parts of this OCP that we are not thrilled with, the main one being the zoning land use changes. We are not naive in the fact that change and development happen, but in recent years, we have seen neighborhoods torn down and replaced with condos and townhouses. There seems to be a plethora of these in the Niccolmacko area already. And with these proposed zoning changes, there will be even more of these built. I believe that the neighborhood we live in is one of the few neighborhoods within the city that offers families a more affordable housing option with large yards close to parks, school, and the incredible nature trails. Truly the ideal location everyone dreams of, we consider ourselves very fortunate. In speaking with residents and neighbors specifically on one ninety eight A Street and fifty three A Avenue, nearly every person we spoke to asked if they were to move, where would we go? Our neighborhood is one of the few affordable neighborhoods left. The purchase price of these new townhouses is roughly the same as what our single-family houses cost, except that we have the bonus of large yards and no strata fees. We are, in fact, the missing middle housing you speak of. A lot of us fear that if the zoning land use changes in the OCP, particularly in the Niccolmacko River neighborhood, will cause a great deal of market speculation, greater increase in traffic and parking congestion in the area. We are already suffering the effects of this. I can only imagine the impact all this growth would have on the city infrastructure, Niccolmacko Elementary, HD Stafford School, and the local parks. As I stated at the beginning, we are not opposed to development, but we feel that the land use designation in our area would be benefited by only allowing ground-oriented development with a maximum height of two stories. This would possibly allow for slightly smaller developments better suited for the existing neighborhoods, thereby reducing density, traffic, and parking issues in the area. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you considering all the input you have received this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schellenberg. Patrick, I think you're unmuted, so.
Thank you for the comments, really appreciate taking the time this evening to speak to this. I think one of the things that I wanted to just note is that, you know, the school district has been referred with regards to these plans. They understand the levels of growth that we are proposing and within various neighborhoods. And they have not seen any issues with this type of population growth in these various neighborhoods. They believe they can accommodate this through various means, whether that's expansion of schools on existing properties or what have you. They certainly are aware and have been made, yeah, have been made aware of these plans. We are also working very closely with our engineering department at the city of Langley and Urban Systems, our subconsultant, who have done a little bit of infrastructure analysis and modeling to make sure that our growth plans are not are not overstressing the current infrastructure and servicing in these neighborhoods and that any kind of upgrades would be at the cost of the developer and would also be feasible within the content of this land use plan. So I believe those are, we've done our due diligence on those fronts in trying to make sure that the land use plan responds to and reflects some of these constraints in the community. Another piece that I would just add is just in regards, I think, you know, of limiting townhouse developments to two stories. It's a bit of a challenge because single detached homes today through zoning are often three stories. And so, you know, wanting to ensure that townhouse developments can integrate and aren't necessarily, you know, lower in density than, say, a single detached home is also a consideration. And, you know, there are certain economic feasibility considerations when building townhomes that require a certain amount of density to be able to build it and make it feasible and be able to sell it. And so I think that three-story expression, the one point two FAR that we've, that we have put into the OCP as the guiding maximum density for these townhouse developments is reflective of what we see as being feasible for townhouse developments in the community at this time. So thank you for your comments, and yeah, certainly something to consider, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, next on the list.
Yes, Mr. Zanuso, please start with your name and street number.
Good evening, my name is Ray Zanuso, I live at one nine nine seven nine fifty A Avenue. And I'm assuming you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm just, I just want to reiterate some of the comments made earlier by Rudy Widenberg, apologies if I don't pronounce that right, and Terry Smith. And my, you know, same concerns regarding the impact on the environment and the security concerns. I have, I was doing, in particular, there are feeder streams that come past my backyard. And the proposed loop, trail loop system is going to come right on the edge of my property here. And right at that point are a couple of feeder creeks that ultimately end up in a backwater, which ends up in the Niccolmacko River. And quite a number of years ago, when I was doing a landscaping project, I was involved with the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, and they, you know, were advising at, you know, the impact of anything, to touch anything in the region of those feeder creeks because they're integral in the rearing of young chum salmon that come up the Niccolmacko River ultimately to the hatchery at two thirty-second or two fortieth. Anyhow, it's quite a return, and they've, you know, worked on increasing that salmon return over the years. And in the fall, you can walk up a number of ditch lines that feed the Niccolmacko, and there'll be spawning chum in those streams. And then latter in the season, when the fry come out of the hatchery, they come into these backwaters to rear for a period of time until they start to head out to sea. At any rate, point in my commentary is, shockingly, these backwaters do hold quite a number of small fish. And along with that come the rest of the wildlife. And it's quite often that, you know, we have deer. In fact, I've got photo reels on my phone of families of deer that often even bed down in my backyard because I have a nice mature landscaping now that's created good cover for the deer. And most currently, a mother and her two fawns. Anyhow, there is a lot of activity and a lot of movement of the wildlife up and down this side of the floodplain. And, you know, and the other concern and question I have is, in consulting with the DFO, which I'm assuming you guys will and have done, you know, in putting a boardwalk along this south side of the floodplain, you're going to disturb the land. And so, you know, the instruction I was given was I, you could not hinder any of the ground cover, any of the natural cover that creates the habitat for the salmon. So my question is, why now? You know, if I wasn't able to move a blade of grass back then that was close to those creeks, not over top of them, and what you're proposing is going to be right on top of these feeder creeks. Why now? You guys may have the ability to go and disturb that ground cover. So I'm just, I'm curious why all of a sudden there's some leniency towards being able to impose on the natural habitat of this corridor. So, you know, that was one of my primary concerns and questions. And of course, you know, the security aspect and privacy aspect because, you know, and like a lot of the other community members, I'm not opposed to the growth and creating access for all of the residents of the community. And yes, we have been fortunate to have that access and the use of this Niccolmacko floodplain. And I think everyone should. But I also think that, you know, given our current challenges with the homelessness and the property invasions that happen, you know, they come and help themselves to whatever is not nailed down, this is going to create a highway for access. And, you know, I believe there will be consideration given to putting up proper green barriers and fencing or whatever to create some privacy and buffers. But at the same time, you know, they're desperate people, and they can hop fences and cut through chain link or whatever the case may be. So my concern is for, of course, the security of property and belongings and our own security. And just the impact on that particular area right behind me that is so sensitive to the salmon spawn that takes place every year. And so essentially, just re-echoing what the other two gentlemen and a few others have already said for their concerns. And that was it. But I would like to see some literature from DFO that says they will accept the form of construction that you're proposing because to introduce aggregate or anything to make a raised walkway is going to introduce, you know, silt to the spawning beds. To drive piles in to raise the boardwalk, you're going to be imposing on it. You know, and at the least once to three times a year, my backyard becomes waterfront. When we get a high tide in conjunction with a snowmelt or heavy rain, the entire floodplain is full of water right to the edge of my property. So that proposed cart path or pathway will be underwater a number of times throughout the year, too. At the minimum, one I see every year. So at any rate, that's my question. I, you know, I'd like to see the consultation from DFO that accepts what you're proposing to go in and disturb a habitat that they don't want to have anything touch it. And that's my comments for tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Zanuso. I believe, Patrick, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, again, some really great comments there. And absolutely, I think we have to look at some of these interventions, specifically west of two oh third and two hundredth in a bit of a holistic manner. And so the pathway itself is one of the items that we're proposing in this area. And it would be likely done in conjunction with some form of ecological restoration or other types of interventions in the floodplain. Our environmental assessment or water course assessment of the floodplain in that area showed that, you know what, there's actually a lot of grasslands in that area that aren't native species to this particular floodplain. These are remnants of old agricultural practices. And they aren't particularly helpful for salmon, for salmon habitat. In fact, the environmental consultant that we have had work on this project with us mentioned that, you know, there's a requirement or there's a need for probably more shade and more trees and more bushes in and around the Niccolmacko River, simply because salmon in parts of these, these parts of the floodplain are not shaded from the sun. And so that can be quite harmful to their habitat. And so looking at at opportunities for restoring some of this habitat, restoring some of this, some of these riparian environments close to the Niccolmacko, which today really are just more remnants of agricultural practices, would help a lot of the wildlife that once existed there, I think. And, you know, as we do that restoration work, we can also look at low-impact type of interventions like a pathway we can also look at low impact type of interventions like a pathway so that people can learn a little bit about that ecological restoration work and understand why it's so important for that salmon habitat. So I think that that's really important as well in in relation to this particular Nickelmeckel River District Neighborhood Plan. I'll also add that we certainly did contact DFO. DFO does not comment on 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 plans. They need a specific project with specific designs and routes and pathways and locations to provide any commentary. And so that would certainly be a next step once the plan is adopted or when the plan, if the plan is adopted, then it would be, you know, one of those, one of those steps in terms of environmental assessment, checking with DFO and also working in partnership with some of the local stakeholders, groups like the Field Naturalists, the LAPS Society, and ensuring that, you know, people who have a lot of interest and and work in in that field are also involved in this process and can make sure that some of those significant ecological features are preserved and saved and and not harmed in the process of creating this this type of pathway. So thank you.
Thanks for that answer, Patrick. Ms. Kisek, who's next speaker?
Yes, Ms. Pult, please commence your comments with your name and street number.
Hello, it's actually, my name is Mark Pelkey. This is my wife's computer, but she's beside me. We live on 190, 19568, sorry, excuse me, 1968551st Avenue. Bear with me, I'm a little bit nervous. It's getting late in the evening.
Don't be nervous, Mark. You're fine.
Thank you. So I I just, I guess, wanted to reiterate some of the statements that were that were made. And I appreciate everybody's being patient with those of us who live south of the Nickelmeckel here. I did notice specifically when Mr. Rudy, although I don't know him personally, he wasn't responded to on his comment. And then when Terry spoke, he had some some responses there. But I just feel that that it's it's not being paid enough attention to the security that does exist on the Nickelmeckel floodplain pathways. I just look outside my window right now and it's getting towards twilight. And I do walk my dog usually about this time of the evening because I work late. And there's a lot of public out there that are generally not people that I would want in a very close proximity to my property. And and I find that very concerning. Obviously, anything lit would would be a detriment to the wildlife that's happening. I've heard the answer stated that the reason we want this pathway to happen is so that we can have a loop for all to enjoy. If a loop is the only reason for all of us to enjoy this, is that worth going even through the consultation stage, going through the DFO, setting something up? It seems like it's going to be a lot of money to get something like this going. I've also heard the response was that it it's a long way off. This might not never happen, might not ever happen. We're not sure if this will pass budget. Then then why are we pursuing this if if there's not a real benefit in in reality, as opposed to just a plan on paper that that looks that looks really nice? I also heard a lady speak to who's backing on the Brighton Lagoon and saying that safety has never been a concern for her. Well, I want to remind people that that water barrier is definitely helping us with our our safety. About three years ago, the fire west of 192nd, I know it's on Surrey property, it burned down almost half that forest due to homeless people camping there. And it was really scary for those of us living south of that Nickelmeckel, talking to our neighbors, thinking this is a tinder dry grassland, talking about climate change. This might be more going forward. I want to keep that barrier a as a natural barrier between between people who might be, you know, camping out in the summer, that kind of thing. So that's a real concern for us, too. The other thing I also I haven't heard is who's paying for this? Or are we in partnership with the Township of Langley? Are we in partnership with the City of Surrey? Who's, you know, in charge of High Knoll and the maintenance there and the amazing work they've done? They've rebuilt that bridge and and the parking there. And so I'm just, I'm just curious on where this where this money is coming from. Are we borrowing this? Are we paying this as taxpayers for a small community like Lake Langley City? Or is this going to be shared within the municipalities of Township of Langley and Surrey? I believe that's all I have for today. Thank you for just your patience with us, kind of belaboring this point. But there was a couple of things that were unanswered for me. Thank you.
Sorry, I had to find my unmuted button. Go ahead, Patrick. Thank you for your call.
Thanks. And and no, you're not belaboring the point. I think I think you're bringing up some very important, you know, subjects to talk about. So I I think the first thing I'd like to 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 maybe speak to is, you know, this idea that the loop is perhaps the only reason that we would like to see this type of infrastructure put in place. And I think what the Nickelmeckel River Corridor really does is it provides an opportunity for active transportation across the city with a fairly direct route from east to west. It's, it's a really significant opportunity, not just for recreational loop, but also for folks to just walk around, for folks to bike, for folks to to explore different ways of getting around in their community. And I think that is really important in the face of 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 climate change and the face of 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 trying to reduce car dependency. I think also the opportunity of pairing that pathway with things like ecological restoration and interpretive signage and getting, you know, more people aware of 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 some of these ecological concerns is also a really interesting opportunity as well. In terms of the cost, a lot of the amenity, a lot of the amenities that are signaled in the Nickelmeckel River District Neighborhood Plan would be intended to be paid through community amenity contributions. So as development occurs, developers would be, you know, responsible for providing a certain amount of 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 money to the city to improve certain amenities nearby. So the pathway, as well as the the perhaps north-south bridge or other types of amenities, the lookouts that we are are showing in the plan are intended to be paid by community amenity contributions. So essentially, development driven. And that's a, that's a really great way to ensure that, you know, as growth happens, development is paying for the amenities that's going to help support that growth. In terms of lighting, I also want to stress that is a concern that we heard in the in the last phase of engagement. And and we certainly added in the development perimeter guidelines and in the public realm guidelines that lighting should should be very scarce. It should be used only for safety purposes in very strategic locations as to not harm any kind of wildlife habitat. So we we certainly heard that in the last phase of engagement and we've incorporated a few guidelines for for public amenities and and pathways and things like that to ensure that, you know, they're not overly lit and if they are lit in in certain areas to make sure that we're not harming wildlife. Thank you.
Mr. Johansson, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your comments. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, with the with the Nickelmeckel Plan, including this this trail connection, yes, they are conceptual. It is intended to be a long term vision so that when the time is right and the appropriate steps have been taken, maybe it is a project that is that is pursued. But it may not turn out exactly as as shown on on the map. But we all know when a line is drawn on the map, it does draw attention for those that are beside it. Fair enough. But I do want to reiterate that it is a conceptual connection. And we've heard a lot of good feedback and ideas about, you know, south of the river, issues there, crossing of the Nickelmeckel River and also aligning it north of the river. All those options require a number of steps to to prove that out and 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 look at that going forward. So I just wanted to to reiterate that. And like Patrick said, the the key thing we want to do is, you know, when we're proposing to guide growth and change in the city over time, especially with Skytrain coming and and proposing change in 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 neighborhoods that haven't had it before, is ensuring that density provides amenities with it, that new growth comes with amenities. And it's those community amenity contributions. We're looking to update those and bring that to council to to set a path forward for that and to make sure that as the city grows that we're getting those those amenities and and improving and enhancing what we have in in the Nickelmeckel. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Redicop. Please start with your name and street number.
Okay, my name is Rihanna Redicop and I am at 5313198A Street. I want this to be short, but I'm not good at shorts, so I apologize in advance. I I bought my house, where I bought my house, because it's close to the floodplain and it's walking distance to downtown Langley. And all of the absolutely wonderful things about the location of my house. We are, I'm in a cul-de-sac with a bunch of townhouse, or a bunch of not townhouses, sorry, duplexes. Each of us has been there, well, half of us, I would say, have been there for more than 10 years, at least, some of us much longer. And we love our neighborhood, as Ms. Schellenberg had mentioned earlier. And we love where we live and we know change is coming. And we know that things are going to have to get denser. But as one of the first sort of forays into exactly where we are here in our neighborhood on 53rd, once the, there was a proposal for a townhouse complex, it kind of all perked us up to what's happening in our neighborhood. So I would like to, my main concern with the OCP, which has nothing to do with the townhouse complex there, that's different, is this access lane that you want to put in our cul-de-sac. Right now, on any given afternoon at 2:45, when school is out and all day long, all summer long and for lots of the winter, the cul-de-sac is full of children playing riding bikes, scooters, playing street hockey, playing basketball, everything that makes a cul-de-sac the most wonderful place to grow up. If we put a laneway in there that goes into our cul-de-sac, it will ruin all of the safety on the street that we have enjoyed for all these years, making it very dangerous for the children that live in the neighborhood. And as Ms. Schellenberg had mentioned, many of us have moved into the neighborhood. We've had kids, we've raised kids. I have young children. But there are younger children than mine being born in our block like this summer at some point. So that would be my main concern and that, I think, is all of it.
Thank you for your comments. Patrick, Carl, sorry, I wasn't sure who wanted to answer.
I I can.
Fight over it?
Yeah, and I think it it also, thank you, Rihanna, for your comments. And it's also ties into what Mr. Melnick was was referring to earlier. And and in this neighborhood, I I would reiterate that, yes, we know change is happening. There's there's some properties that are being proposed for redevelopment. But a- as the property owners there, of course, you 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 control the pace of what happens to your property. You know, whether you decide to stay there for long term, if you decide to sell, if you decide to maybe redevelop on your own. But I think the the OCP and the Nickelmeckel Plan, the idea there is to provide that that long term sort of game plan for if and when redevelopment occurs in that area, that if there is, I think, the the overall vision of having that vehicle and pedestrian connection, it is something that would be put in place probably at the tail end of the redevelopment of that entire neighborhood. And it probably would be put in in phases as part of redevelopment. Like, say, if there's redevelopment occurs first on the properties on the south side of 54, you might get sort of half that connection put through. And when the properties on the south side of that redevelop and likely other properties in the area would be redeveloping as well, that's when that connection would be completed. So I would say it's, you know, judging from what we're hearing from landowners in the area, it seems like redevelopment of those cul-de-sac areas is probably a little ways off and that's just fine. Again, this is just a land use plan. But we want to make sure that when that area does redevelop to higher densities that we're able to have that access through the block for pedestrians and also for fire trucks. And, you know, these lanes are something that we we do pay a lot of attention to to ensure that they have traffic calming and they're narrow and they have speed tables and that sort of thing to ensure that there's no rat running. And in some cases, they maybe just provide vehicle access from one end and maybe ballered it off on the other end to provide just pedestrian and cyclist access until such time it makes sense to have vehicle access. So I just wanted to reiterate that and really appreciate your comments. I know I live in a neighborhood where they're piloting the slow street program and they put up 40 kilometer hour speed signs. And I still find that people are speeding down the street. So thank you for your concerns and just wanted to reiterate it is a long term time for that.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Please start by stating your name and street number.
Hi there. My name's Janine Brody and I'm at 5191204th Street. I want to say thank you to everybody. I I know this meeting is running on late and it's very hot, but I appreciate all the work that everybody has done on this development plan. I want to touch on a little bit of the comments that Ms. Tang had sort of mentioned earlier with regards to the sort of portage area. I live in what's currently portage estates right now. So we are in kind of a unique area inasmuch as we are boarding right onto Portage Park, which from what the plan is showing, shows a lot of development within the area with the thought of putting in like a, what is it saying? Sort of like a river frontage, putting in lookouts, putting in sort of different areas really to allow sort of more of a community oriented aspect with regards to the use of the park, pushing through and extending 51A from 204th over to 203rd. The Shod Heritage House is right here. So I know that there is forecast and development around making that more accessible. And a lot of those things, of course, are more city directed than they are sort of individual owner directive. And so I know that in general, we're saying that property development is more owner directive as owners decide to sell or upgrade, that the zoning will change. In our location, my question is whether or not that is something that's maybe a little bit different for us just because a lot of the things that are projected to occur within this, you know, the Riverfront Plaza, the Outlooks, et cetera, those are things that are potentially being built right on our land, which are not things that would be necessarily owner directed. And my questioning around this comes from the fact that we, as a council and as owners, are currently discussing our own upgrades to the property. This property hasn't been really upgraded in the last 45 years and we're looking at putting out a large amount of money per unit to be able to upgrade these properties. And so the projection and the timeframe, if this plan is approved, does very much make a difference to us. I mean, we have 40, sorry, 81 units that are sitting on this property, which we know from a developmental standpoint, they would probably put about 300 units in here. It's a huge property for having only 180, only having 81 units. And we understand that. We just want to sort of have a better understanding of the development of these things that are listed as they aren't really owner generated. And if this proposal is approved and it does go through, what is the timeline that you're looking is? Are are these developments going to be going in prior to the Skytrain coming in? Or are these things that are looked at to be, you know, rolled out and developed after the Skytrain is coming in? And just wondering if anybody sort of has any foresight in that sort of things. The other thing I want to mention is just in regards to people that have mentioned the safeties with. The other thing I want to mention is just in regards to people that have mentioned the safeties within the paths. I know a lot of those are sort of on the south side. Of course, we have an extensive path line that comes in through Portage Park. And I will say that they are very used at nighttime because it's not lit. Not from homeless people, but from the teenagers. We have quite a Friday and Saturday night problem in as much as they are down in the paths. You can hear them having parties, they are up in Portage Estates in the park. The cops are here regularly, it's not lit. And so it's very convenient, they are down throughout the water areas. It's sort of the hidden nooks throughout the summer, they leave their garbage. They, it is, it is an ongoing problem that we experience, they come through our properties. So there's many people in our townhouse complexes that do have security cameras. And they speak very regularly of people from the parks. Mostly the kids as they are filtering home drunk, end up going through the properties. So I think that the security concerns that people are mentioning really do have to be at a forefront. It's not as much as people just using the space and maybe are going to step on a property. From my experience where I'm sitting, I experience it every Friday and Saturday night, quite a large problem down here. I mean, just on this last Friday, we had the police show up with loudspeaker at one, one AM to clear them out. So that's all I have to say, but just wondering if you guys have any sort of idea of sort of the projection and the timeline for those more city initiative projects.
Great, thanks, Ms. Brody. Yeah, I live on the other side, so I heard it from the other side of the floodplain. So I understand what you're saying about Friday and Saturday nights with the fireworks and such. So Patrick, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for your comments and, and yeah, I'm glad you, you brought up the fact that these developments are they're, they're property owned, owned properties with, it's a stratified property essentially. And so provincial legislation requires that eighty percent of the strata agrees to the redevelopment or agrees to devolution. And so it really again, isn't up to the city to decide when that kind of development might occur. It is up to the strata corporation as a body itself to determine, you know, if there is a developer that comes and would like to purchase the property, essentially eighty percent of the, of the owners in that strata have to agree to it for it to essentially devolve. So in terms of that particular development process, it is a little bit more complex than a typical redevelopment application, which wouldn't need that type of, of, of support from, from around, from around the strata table essentially. And of course, the, the city led improvements, so the types of, of improvements, say to Portage Park, the lookouts and those types of amenities would be clinched as development occurs. So as mentioned a little bit earlier, through development, we would be looking at opportunities through density bonusing and community amenity contributions as a method to pay for some of those park amenities. And so it's very likely that if a development were to occur, say on the Portage Estates or in that general area, that there would be a fund set specifically to try and, and get some amenities built and, and, and help support some of the growth in, in population that would occur in that area. But in terms of a timeline, it's very hard to say. It is dependent on the kind of support and, and the willingness of a developer to come and develop that kind of, of property. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. I believe Mr. Johansson, you have something to add.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just, just mentioning that, you know, we've said this a few times in our comments that the, the OCP and the Nickamackle Plan are intended to be, you know, that long-term thirty-year vision. And, you know, sometimes you have visions and plans that, that don't get started on and then completed for, for many decades. So I think that, you know, going back to the start of the process and the workshops and, and the consultation that was done early on in the Nickamackle process was, there was a, it was identified through that input and work that it would be very nice to have a, a small-scale retail sort of waterfront or, or riverfront plaza in that area situated just off of two oh three street and coupled with redevelopment in the area. And as you know, there's two large properties there. And I think the intent of having that village policy, set of policies in the plan is just to ensure that if and when redevelopment happens, that it's undertaken in a coordinated manner. So let's just say for argument's sake that the property to the west of you decides to redevelop according to the vision. What this would set out is to ensure that, that the redevelopment of that property wouldn't impact your property or your strata from eventually redeveloping or continuing to exist in its present form. So there's a lot of sort of angles to why we have these policies in there. You know, eventually, you know, far down the road, we do envision a comprehensively planned village there. But I have communicated with a few of the owners in your strata. And I, I've said, I've said the same thing, it's your strata, you're the property owners and you're in control. And, you know, if you want to do that building envelope repair and stay there for another twenty, thirty years, by all means, go for it. Just know that if, if you ever decide as a strata to dissolve, which I believe takes eighty percent of the members to do so. Then this provides your stratum options for future redevelopment, if you ever want to go that, that way. Thanks.
Um, Kuzak. The next speaker. Do we have any speakers left?
Hi, sorry, Madam Mayor, my mute was not working there. Ms. Hanson, go ahead and start your comments with your name and street number, please.
Hi there, my name is Tanny Hanson. I live at two zero zero nine five forty-five A Avenue, which means I'm basically on two hundred A near forty-six A. And two hundred A would be the back of those townhouses and the development that would be proposed for the two hundredth street corridor south of the Nickamackle. So I'm very impressed with the, the depth and the thought that's gone into this plan. And I am coming to the table late because I only found out of it, out about it because of Ann Lavak. And the fact that she sent around a flyer asking people to support single lot development rather than multi-lot development. Now, it looks like from everything you're saying that it's not going to be possible to develop, to prevent multi-lot development. Or indeed townhouses along two hundreds, if indeed that's what's going to happen. What I'm wondering is, Patrick, I have a question, which Patrick mentioned. That those townhouses would be developed in parcels of maybe four to six. And that they would respect the integrity of the established neighborhood on the other side. But if the townhouses are going to have back lanes, for example, onto two hundred A, that does considerably increase traffic. And parking issues and noise issues and things like that. Now, one of the reasons that I moved to this area was that it was so special because of the tall trees and the ranchers. There are hardly any ranchers left in the lower mainland now. And they're particularly attractive to seniors. And you had mentioned a range of housing for different kinds of people, different income levels. So my question is, is there any provision made for keeping these trees? And are there any incentives for developers to keep them? Because everywhere I've seen townhouse development before in other suburbs, they are not kept. And they are part of a very unique character of this area, which extends from Brookswood onto the border of Langley City. So that's my question.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Patrick, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. And again, yeah, that, that certainly is a, a deep concern that we have is, is not wanting, you know, growth and density and, and these new housing forms to have a negative impact on the beautiful tree canopy and, and some of the environmental features that exist in, in Langley City, especially next to, next to the Nickamackle floodplain, where there is such great ecological value there. So I think, you know, in terms of the development that would be happening in this area, I think we see the opportunity. What I had mentioned is limiting the amount of units that would be available within a, one building of townhouses. So up to six units essentially. But you would be able to, a developer would be able to essentially purchase probably around a minimum of two properties and build maybe three or four units rather than, you know, the full six. And so there's, there's other, there's other ways of doing this and it doesn't have to go to the max. And a, and a developer doesn't need to buy more than say two properties to achieve that type of development. And in that case, if it's smaller, if it's more piecemeal like that, then you do have the option, the opportunity perhaps of, of saving more trees. There are also environmental development permit guidelines that, that speak to retaining significant trees and significant environmental features in, in certain areas. So I, I believe in, in an area close to the Nickamackle River District. There, there certainly are some sensitive ecological areas, environmentally sensitive areas that are noted on the map. And map fourteen, I believe it is, if I, if I have that right, or map thirteen, I should say. And so many of those types of properties that are adjacent to or, or close to these environmentally sensitive areas certainly have to take that into consideration. And then as mentioned in the presentation as well, the creation of a forest management plan to really protect and even enhance the tree canopy is something that we, we certainly want to create as a result of this OCP bylaw. And that would provide the city with the tools to, to not only say you don't, you can't cut this particular tree on or this particular tree stand. But, you know, if, if something does happen, then there's an opportunity perhaps replace those trees with greater amount of trees elsewhere. There's, there's provisions in that management bylaw to, to enhance the tree canopy and add to it rather than just, you know, ensuring that certain trees don't get cut down. Leave it at that. I really appreciate the comments and thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Go ahead, Carl.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention that in our district policies for both the two hundredth street and two oh eight street corridors, the proposed district policies, we have specific language in there that notes that as redevelopment occurs, retain the mature trees along the two hundredth street frontage and the two oh eight street frontage. As we know, and as the speakers highlighted, there's some beautiful, large, mature trees. A good example would be north of Alice Brown Elementary along two hundredth street on the east side. A large fir trees, a lot of those are in the city right away or just on the edge. But we wanted to make sure that if the plan is adopted and redevelopment occurs there. And, and you know what, it could be, so, you know, property owners can even tear down their houses and rebuild new houses there. We want to make sure that those trees are protected along those frontages. And the other part of it too is that as we've also added in conjunction of retaining the existing trees, to make sure that as we have new frontage built on two hundred and two oh eight street, we have a new tree strip put in, a wider sidewalk. And in that new street, tree strip, we're planting new trees, which will further enhance the tree canopy along these major corners.
Great, well, thank you very much. All right, Ms. Kuzak, are there any other speakers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have currently reached the end of our list for queued speakers.
Okay, so is there anyone else who wishes to speak to bylaw three two zero zero?
Yes, Ms. Lavak is requesting to speak a second time.
Okay, and as long as it's new information or a new question, that would be fantastic. So go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to talk specifically about the advantages of single lot development compared to multi-lot development. One of the advantages, first of all, you get the increased population density much more quickly with single lot development. It begins almost immediately instead of waiting ten to fifteen to twenty years for townhouse development for land assembly to occur. Second, with single lot development, you can get that affordable housing, both owned and rented much more quickly. Because instead of waiting ten to twenty years for townhouses, which are not that affordable anyway, you get homes with secondary suites or duplexes or triplexes. You can get the same kind of density as you would with townhouses. Third, single lot development tends to lead to cleaner, more attractive neighborhoods because the housing revitalization occurs more quickly. New homes are built immediately on single lots instead of waiting ten to twenty years for land assembly, for townhouse development. And fourth, single lot development avoids the huge increase in rundown rental homes that occurs while you're waiting that ten to twenty years for townhouse development. Neighborhoods stay more attractive. If we look at what happened on two hundredth street after the two thousand and five OCP, two hundredth street north of the Nickamackle, all those rundown properties that were there for many, many years until they were torn down for condominiums. Why would we want to let two hundredth street, street south of the Nickamackle, two oh eight street, south of the Nickamackle look like that, look like slums essentially? Our major arteries, two hundred and two oh eight, south of the Nickamackle, should be showcases for the beauty of Langley. That should be where we develop single lot development so that it builds one lot at a time and those areas remain beautiful. So we don't want that detrimental effect that we saw north of the Nickamackle on two hundred. We can avoid that by not allowing land assembly south of the Nickamackle. I felt quite embarrassed over the last ten years when people from outside of Langley would come to visit me and they would be driving down that strip of two hundredth street north of the Nickamackle and would see houses that look like slums in that area waiting to eventually be torn down. Why embarrass everybody living in Langley by letting that happen to two hundred and two oh eight, south of the Nickamackle? Now, earlier Carl Johansson mentioned the community standards bylaw. Unfortunately, it is not possible to call bylaw enforcement every time we notice uncut grass, overgrown shrubbery, peeling paint, moss on the rooftops. But the cumulative effect of these things on rental properties happens over a period of years and creates unsightly homes in our neighborhoods. So instead of building townhouses on two hundred and two oh eight street corridors, it would be much more attractive and much quicker to build duplexes, triplexes, or single-family homes with rental suites. This will give us the increased population density and affordable housing that we need. A townhouse is not inherently better at providing population density and affordable housing. It is true that two hundred and two oh eight streets are busy, but the homeowners who live there now are accustomed to pulling out into these streets. And we haven't been presented with any statistics about traffic accidents that this creates. So in closing, we really need to stop multi-lot development south of the Nickamackle River and limit development south of the Nickamackle to only single lot development. This is a more efficient, quicker, and more attractive way to revitalize the area south of the Nickamackle and increase population density. Please, don't make us fight these townhouse developments in the future one at a time, because we will fight them. Make it clear in the OCP that ground-oriented development south of the Nickamackle will be limited to single-family homes with suites or duplex, triplex development, only single lot development. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Lavak. Did, Carl, did you have a comment or? Sorry, I thought you put your hand up. Okay, were there any, thank you for those comments. Anyone, any other speakers, Ms. Kuzak? Sorry, I lost you here on my Zoom panel.
No problem, Madam Mayor. At the moment, we have no one indicating they would like to speak.
Okay, so I will call for a third and final time if anybody else who wishes to speak to bylaw three two zero zero.
Ms. Lavak would like to speak a third time.
Okay, you have five minutes again, Ms. Lavak.
Thank you. This time, I wanted to talk about a comment that Carl Johansson made earlier. I believe it was Carl. He said that townhouse development would only appear directly on two hundred and two oh eight. Uh, I believe it was Carl. He said that townhouse development would only appear directly on two hundred and two oh eight. And that it wouldn't spread into the adjacent streets and cul-de-sacs. Now, I wanna make sure that I heard that correctly. Um, and that the adjacent cul-de-sacs would be limited to single lot development. If that is the case, then I wanna see that land use map on page one, two, three. Of the OCP amended to show areas of ground-oriented development that are single lot. And areas of ground-oriented development that are multiple lot. I think that would be uh, enhance the clarity of this, a great deal. So I'd like to hear some clarification on this specific issue. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Johansson.
Uh, yes, uh, you, in, in response to Anne's question, uh, in the district policies, we have uh, specific. Uh, policies for two hundred Street and, and to a way that note that um, um, townhouses and row houses are not allowed on cul-de-sacs. Per se, so we, we have that in, in the, uh, the policy here. And that plex development uh, is supported uh, on, in cul-de-sac situations. Now, that being said, uh, there is an additional policy there that does note if uh, a developer is looking to assemble lots. And also uh, close and purchase the cul-de-sac to create a, a single parcel for redevelopment. That possibility exists as well. That being said, uh, the likelihood of that happening is uh, relatively low. Compared to uh, the possibility of single lot development. And, and you make a good point about uh, saying that single lot development is, is a good way to promote gentle densification. And that is something that we, we want to do uh, through those policies. And uh, the ground-oriented definition in the Nikameko Plan for specific areas. Uh, does provide a little bit of opportunity for townhouses, uh, and plexes in, in the same area. But the intent of that, again, is to really emphasize townhouses on uh, the arterials. Where there, those driveways that are directly accessing the arterials right now, we're looking to, to remove those and, and have. Uh, new frontage put in. Uh, so that takes a, a certain amount of, of scale. Um, it's, again, it's not large development, but it's, it's two, three, four, five lots uh, that could be put into a, a development. And single lot development, you know, duplexes, triplexes, uh, for example, could happen uh, further away from uh, the arterials. Uh, for example, say along, I believe it's uh, forty-nine, uh, sorry, fifty Avenue off of two oh three. Uh, is, is a good example where single lot development to duplexes and triplexes. Uh, could be something that would work uh, very well. We've been uh, talking with some uh, property owners there about that, that possibility. So that would not require uh, assembly in those cases. Uh, there's also some cases up closer to the floodplain on the two oh eighth corridor. Where there are large areas of existing lots that are within the one and two hundred year floodplain and flood construction level area. And it might be because uh, of that situation, the redevelopment in that area, any future redevelopment has to be quite a bit higher than it is now. Uh, so it's possible that there might be some townhouse development there. But I think in summary, it's, it's important to, to note that we are emphasizing the townhouses along the arterials. We wanna make sure those cul-de-sacs are limited to plex development, uh, and there are some areas where there is that flexibility for both. Uh, now, I just one thing I wanted to mention uh, was that with assembly north of the uh, Nikameko versus south. Uh, you know, I've been pondering that point, and one thing that we wanna highlight is that north of the Nikameko. Um, sometimes, and this is something that we see uh, quite a bit through working with uh, applicants and developers. Is that uh, the price of those lots, because the yield of, of the amount of units you could have. From a, a single family or a single attached lot to an apartment assembly, you're, you're looking at ten to fifteen new units per. Former single-family home where it's south of the river, it's a lot less, uh, three to four. So what that does is that north of the river, that can create a lengthier assembly process, uh, where uh, the prices are higher. Uh, the ability to assemble is a little bit more difficult when you get to those last properties and prices can get really high. So sometimes that tends to slow down assembly a little bit. But south of the river, we're looking at uh, a lot smaller, a lot sizes, uh, so that we can get those smaller assemblies. And move those applications through the process uh, quicker, and we don't run into, into those issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johansson. Okay, are there any other speakers who wish to speak? To bylaw? Three two zero zero. I should have that memorized by now.
At the moment, it doesn't appear that there are any further speakers.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Last time. Any other?
Doesn't appear to be any more speak. Oh, someone has raised their hand now to speak, Madam Mayor.
Uh, please go ahead, state your name and your address, please. And that's Pedro Coram. You've raised your hand. Did you have a question? You're muted. No, any emails?
No, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, anyone else? No. Okay, so seeing no more speakers, um, do any members of council have questions regarding bylaw three two zero zero? Counselor Stortaboom, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question and a comment. First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and making themselves known. The passion that you have for our community is obvious, and the input is positive. I really appreciate all that we've heard. Because it demonstrates how much you love living in Langley City. Um, Mr. Johansson, I have heard a lot this evening, and I'm not adverse to tweaking some of the, the plans. I presume that that is an option, is it not?
Yes, I threw it to Counselor Stortaboom. Uh, yeah, following the close of, of the public hearing. Uh, council is, is able to consider the, uh, the feedback that has been, been provided. Of course, staff uh, who have uh, uh, heard the feedback will be processing that as well. And, and I would expect that uh, when the bylaw is brought back to the next, uh, you know, the next regular council meeting. Uh, that's the time for uh, council to uh, you know, talk about potential. Uh, you know, one option is to uh, consider adoption of the plan as is. Another option for council is to uh, put forth uh, changes or tweaks, as you say, to the plan. Uh, and staff may uh, come back also with some observations about uh, the input that they've heard tonight, that we've heard tonight. And also some of the feedback we got from our agencies like uh, TransLink, for example, and propose some uh, minor tweaks to. Uh, uh, the, the plans uh, for council's consideration. So in short, yes, uh, council has uh, the unfettered uh, authority to tweak the plan. Uh, and it depends on the scale of it. Uh, staff would also provide advice on, on how that could happen. But uh, if there's uh, some adjustments uh, that have been talked about tonight, uh, those are something that can easily facilitate anything.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson. Thank you, Mr. Ostrick as well. Uh, I really appreciate your special effort, not just in this evening's presentation. But in the uh, many months of planning and strategizing and uh, formulating uh, what has been brought to us. Um, this is visioning for the future. It's very, very exciting. Um, and there's some really incredibly great ideas. Um, very innovative ideas that have been brought forward as well. I won't um, go on, uh, because it's been a long hot day for everybody. But again, I just wanna thank you very much, and I'll look forward to chewing on this a little bit with you gentlemen in the near future. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Great. Did any other members of council have questions regarding bylaw three two zero zero? Questions regarding the bylaw? Okay. All right, well, I am gonna have a mover and a seconder to close the public hearing, please. Uh, Counselor Wallace and Stortaboom, all those in favor? All right, well, this meeting is adjourned, but the public hearing is now closed. Council will consider the feedback that we've received from the public hearing and consider third reading of the bylaws at a future council meeting, not tonight. So we'd like to thank everybody in the public for coming out tonight and having a respectful conversation. About how our community is gonna move forward. Um, I'd like to thank staff and modus for being here tonight. And providing the answers to all these questions. So thank you, everyone. I, I hope you get a little cooler tonight. It's thirty-one out and ten o'clock at night, so um, not what we're used to. But uh, thank you again for coming out and uh, have a wonderful evening.